Okay, let's, I got, I like. Where did Steve go? Oh, there is. Okay, good morning, and welcome to Ventura County Board of Supervisors meeting. It is February 23rd, and welcome to your boardroom. We will start with our call to order and the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Slow on the long. I'm here also, thank you. And we'll move now to our moment of inspiration, and it's such a pleasure for me to have invited Reverend Dr. Audrey Weiss Vincent, who is going to give us our moment of inspiration this morning. If you'd please come forward, Reverend. She is a former teacher, having taught at junior high and high school, English in Ohio, Arizona, and California. She entered the seminary at Midlife in Scotland, and after two years at the University of Aberdeen's College of Divinity, she continued her studies at Claremont and received a theology degree and Master of Divinity and Doctor of Ministry. And she is currently very involved with her Universalist Church here in our county, and just a wonderful woman and constituent from the district. Pleasure to have you here.
Well, thank you very much, Supervisor Kathy Long. I was asked to say some words about Black History Month, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you because I have read so little about it in the papers. Now, I know there are many things online, if you can read, but it seems to have faded from view, and I took this opportunity to look into the history of Black History Month and learned that it began, the idea began some hundred years ago, in 1915, when the second black person to have gotten a degree from Harvard University, and at the same time, the son of slaves, Dr. Carter Woodson, and another black man, Reverend Jesse Moreland, co-founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. And their goal was to research and to make known the largely hidden story of the many, many contributions that black people have played in the history of this country and in the world beyond our shores, and to instill, especially in black people, pride and hope for a better future through education. Dr. Woodson selected a week in February as the time to honor the birth of two men whose work greatly changed the future for African-Americans. Abraham Lincoln, of course, the United States President, who issued the Emancipation Proclamation, born on February 12th, and Frederick Douglass, one of the nation's leading abolitionists, born on February 14th. Dr. Woodson developed teaching materials, photographs, and details of African-American lives, cultural figures, and historical figures, and brought to light a rich history beyond George Washington Carver and Booker T. Washington, who are exemplary, of course, but we need to know more about others as well. After Dr. Woodson's death in 1960, his legacy continued and made more significance during the civil rights era of the 50s and 60s, when public outrage grew over Jim Crow laws and other inhumane treatments of blacks, all of which called for change and reform. Then, in 1976, and I think that's when most of us began hearing about Black History Month, at least most of us white folks, that was expanded to a whole month, which supposedly helped raise our consciousness as Americans that it was time African-American contributions be recognized, that blacks be recognized and celebrated as full Americans, that African-American history is part and parcel of American history. We have a tapestry of American history. African-American is a rich strand of that history. Imagine American music without jazz. Imagine sports without African-Americans, competitors like Wilma Rudolph, how many of you know who she was, remember who she was. She was a record-breaking track star, born the twentieth of 22 children, stricken with polio as a child, and not only defeated polio, but broke world records and achieved three Olympic track events, gold medals, the first American to win three medals in the Olympics in 1960. Black history highlights such women and men. There are different sports, there are different seasons and times, but our Olympic performers today stand on shoulders such as hers. The contributors are throughout our society in all walks of life, from all African-Americans of many, many works and achievements. If someone you know has a pacemaker, its control element, and ones also control elements used for guided missiles were all originally invented by Otis Boykin, an African-American. So here we are in 2010, nearly 100 years after, Dr. Woodson's historical efforts were begun, and we have a black man in the White House. So have we achieved what we set out to achieve? Well, I wonder, as I said, I have found very little about black American history, black history in, Black History Month, in the media, in mainstream media, or maybe I've just missed it. I'm wondering if you've seen it and I've missed. I'm just asking questions.
Sure.
You've missed it, or you've seen some things?
No, we've seen it, yeah.
Oh, well, good.
Certainly.
Okay, well, I have missed it. I noted comedian Wanda Sykes saying that what she remembered the other day in the cafeteria at NBC was seeing the Black History menu, fried chicken, and collard greens, and black-eyed peas. So hopefully, we learn more than these things. And for fun, I'm giving you a crossword puzzle to work in your off times, and I hope you enjoy it, and perhaps we can learn more about Black History Month.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you so much. If we wrap up this month, we thank you so much for being here.
And thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Audrey. Okay, shall we all stand for our Pledge of Allegiance? And Ms. Khan, would you lead us?
My pleasure. Please join the pledge. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever and ever to be concerned.
Thank you again, Dr. Vincent. All right, our minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of October 27th.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the minutes.
We're getting pretty good at that down here.
October 22nd. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Next up, we have our agenda review.
Yes, Madam Chair and board members, on our regular agenda, you have item 27, which we're asking you to hear before item 26. And item 26 has a revised page three, which I believe has been circulated to all of the board members and posted. And also on the regular agenda, policy matters, item 32, there have been letters submitted, and those have been provided to the board, as well as the clerk has distributed them. I believe also, we would like your board to consider hearing item 26 and 27 before Supervisor Zaragoza has to leave the boardroom, because one of them requires a forefisk.
Yes.
Thank you.
And if we can do that, yeah, yeah. We may also need to try to hear 32 before then, too. Anything else on agenda review? Okay.
Madam Chair, when we get to 32, I'll talk about it a little bit more, but I probably have to talk once my staff, I'll probably be asking for us to continue it at the time. If that helps you in terms of planning on this departure.
Okay. All right, noting that, agenda review, we're going to accept it as recommended, then? Okay, the agenda is as presented. Item seven, consent, 10 through 14.
Move the consent calendar.
Motion of second to move the consent calendar. Please vote. Okay, and that passes. All right, we'll move on now to our public comment, a time for citizens presenting items to the board on related matters not appearing on this agenda. And we have first up, Mr. Braitman. Good morning.
Good morning, it's nice to be here. First of all, I want to commend the county of Ventura for your adult literacy program. The fact that the need for this program is not refutable, it's an essential part of our community, and the fact that the adult literacy program that's run by the county is successful is also beyond dispute. Every year for more than 10 years, my Rotary Club in Ventura, the Rotary Club of Ventura South, has supported the adult literacy program through a very enjoyable evening that we call Trivia Challenge. We're having our 20th annual Trivia Challenge on March 16th next month. The way it works is individuals, or companies, or county departments submit a three-member team at a processing cost of $300 per team. The money goes to adult literacy. So I'm here this morning to, as I have in past years, challenge each member of your board to submit a team, request the county executive's office to submit a team, county council to submit a team, as they have in the past. I've provided to you both a little announcement of our trivia challenge and a team application. We look forward to having you individually there that evening, or find the three smartest people in your district and put them on your team, and let's see which of the five supervisory districts can do the best. With that, I want to thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing you on the 16th.
Congratulations on your 20th annual, appreciation to the Rotary Club.
Thank you very much.
For continuing to support our adult literacy.
Have a good day, all of you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Wendy Halleran.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here again to speak on the Wright Library issue. We're a bit confused, because when we look at the county library website, under the reason for closure for Wright Library, it says, "The city of Ventura did not have enough money to fund this library." And then when we go to the city of Ventura's website, it says, "The county did not have enough money to fund this library." So I don't know if you're the body to ask about who is responsible if there is a shortfall for providing the baseline hours according to the contract, who exactly is responsible? It seems like we're having trouble figuring out just who is responsible for that, whether it's the county, the city, a measure of both, or whatever, but if you can help us figure out what entity that is, that would be helpful. Regarding the budget that was approved that withdrew the subsidy from Ventura that they said they could no longer afford, the issue of subsidy, people have kind of been confused about this as well. The county library does generally provide subsidy to many of its libraries on a yearly basis, because that's part of the benefit of being in the county system. There was $280,000 that the county library commission said that they had to take back, that they could no longer afford to provide to Ventura. But then, I mentioned this last time I was here, when I look at the current allocations of these subsidy monies for the current fiscal year, I see Port Juani getting about $200,000 in subsidy, and this is an area that has a population of about 22,000, if I'm estimating that correctly. The Wright Library was serving a population of around 78,000 people, I believe, so I'm wondering what the justification is for allowing such a large subsidy to a library that serves such a smaller proportion, or a smaller number of people. And I just don't understand the rationale that the county library could no longer provide the subsidy to a library that served many, many more people. I would also like to again address the long-term viability of the county library system when I'm looking at their five-year projections. Just taking salaries and benefits, for example, current fiscal year, they take up 82.8% of the taxes collected, and by 1415 fiscal year, they're projected to consume about 91%. So just looking at the long-term sustainability of this agency, it looks like they're going to be facing more and more deficits going forward, and I wondered what the agency approach was to kind of stand aside of the cost exceeding the revenues. I'm concerned about other libraries being cut. Ventura still has Avenue Library, I'm concerned that we're going to lose that one if we stay with the county. So I'm just wondering who to talk to, or what the strategy is going forward as we plan for our library service in our city, how the county agency is addressing this, what seems to be a rather severe problem. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Miley. Um, Brock. Bookie.
We have a tremendous amount of information to cover, and five minutes is hardly enough time, so I'm going to try to go quickly through the documents that I just handed out for all of you, and I can bring more information next week. It has been more than challenging to get the information we need from the library director, Jackie Griffin. And while Roberta Rodriguez and Sandy Bickford have been really quick to respond, and both of them wrote in their emails to me that the person that I should have been addressing my questions to is the library director, Jackie Griffin, and she was the person I requested the documents from in the first place. The library directors emailed to me on January 27th, 2010, at 8:54 a.m., stated, "At this time, we're going to have to ask you that you begin to fill out Freedom of Information Act paperwork for each of your requests. The workload on staff has become far too large, and we need to be able to track the staffing costs. If you need help locating the paperwork, we will be glad to help you. Thank you, Jackie." I responded immediately after that, at 9:00, I think it was at 9:14. "Please let me know where to fill out the paperwork, and I'll be right in to fill it out." I only live a few blocks, I was happy to come down and fill out the paperwork right away. I never got a response that day, and I, you know, understand, you know, a few days is a normal amount of time to wait. And then I emailed again the next day, and then it was three days later that I had to verbally ask Elena Brokaw and Jackie Griffin where I went to fill out this Freedom of Information Act paperwork. Neither of them knew, and Jackie said she had accidentally written the wrong thing, and that I was supposed to fill out a Public Records Act, and then they didn't know where I was supposed to go to do that. So I will note here that many of the budgets and agendas that the public is interested in were previously on the county library website, and they have been removed. I'm asking that they be put up again so that more members of the public have access to the public documents that they need. I did get a few things after the library director called me an arrogant worm. I have copies for all of you of the December 4th, 2009 email. I asked seven budget questions, and then got an email that, obviously accidentally was not supposed to come to me, but did, calling me an arrogant worm. The library director then sent a correction, saying that she was listening to a band, a musical band, called The Arrogant Worms. I responded that if you go and look up the band on iTunes, it is "The Arrogant Worms", not "An Arrogant Worm." The blessing of being called an arrogant worm is that finally, we started to receive some of the documents we requested from Pat O'Brien, that certain documents, like the attachment in the MOU stating that the 40 hours that Wright Library is guaranteed, were continually missing. It took three specific requests just to get that attachment to the MOU. The name-calling doesn't concern me as much as the group that the library director sent the arrogant worm email to. It was sent to Steve Bennett, Kathy Long, Cindy Cantle, Brian Brennan, Elena Brokaw, and Peter Brown. Why these six names? And it seems odd that she would be sending musical information about a band to these six people in response to seven budget questions about the wrongful closure of a library. And then Supervisor Bennett, I was wondering if you could explain Councilmember Brennan's job in your office? There are many people who believe it's a conflict to have a city council member working in the county supervisor's office, and perhaps all of you have council members working in your offices, there's a lot of confusion about this, so if you can let us know if it's a common practice or an anomaly, there's more than just library people who are asking about it. As Wendy stated before, 78,000 residents living in 93003 and 93004 have lost the library that they pay for. The argument about two libraries in Ventura is false. Ventura has four libraries, and Mayor Fulton's original plan with library director Jackie Griffin was to replace Wright with a children's library in the mall, so if you close one, open another one, you still have four libraries. They were not consolidating to three libraries, so, and our city is unique, it's long and wide, and so it doesn't have a city center, and so it makes more sense to have libraries across that length, neighborhood libraries is what the citizens prefer than it does to have a central, central library. Again, that children's library at the mall that they were trying to replace Wright with was $25,000 a year, and much less square footage, you have the minutes of the meeting on February 5th, when they were trying, all under agenda, item 10, were trying to close one library, consolidate it, and open a children's library in the mall. Director Griffin, in that same agenda, states that the reason for Wright's closure was the 650 structural deficit. She does not explain that this is a county error that, because Moore Park funds were not withdrawn from the budget. Closing the third busiest library in the county system that serves all of these schoolchildren is the wrong way to make up a county budget error. There is money in the reserve, and there are other ways to make up for this county mistake. Closing a library is a violation and not a solution. I'll have to finish next week, I'm sorry that I'm out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes the public comment request cards. Yes, it does. Okay, next we'll move to board comments. Mr. Foy.
Thank you very much. I'd like to, first of all, adjourn in memory of people on this list, and call out one, a friend of mine, that gentleman named Jack Albert, who had died last week. Tragic, he leaves six kids, and family 51 years old, and best friend of my neighbor, and somebody I'd known for a long time. So we're sorry to see that happen. But on some more positive notes, we have Angel Ruggiero, you know, the female ice hockey player, that now they're up into the, they reached the semifinals last Thursday, so some great stuff that's happening there. We also had, even my office, one of my people that work in our office, her husband just graduated from the CHP Academy, made it through, which is one of the toughest academies in the country, so, good to hear, some good things going on. And one of the other things I do want to say to Reddy and Jeff, we came out and did a whole thing on water rates in Moore Park, and they did a tremendous, tremendous job, and was able to, we had to film, so go around television, try that whole thing about letting people know what's going on, and it's really interesting as they really start to understand the whole water thing, what goes on in this state, where water comes from, from the Colorado. It's a difficult situation, but they did a good job, and people were very pleased with their explanations and stuff, so. Anyway, those are my comments for today. Thank you.
Keep it.
Thank you. A few things over the last week, I was able to attend a really nice function for the Simi Veterinary Hospital that does free and low-cost baby neutering, that has done a great job in helping to reduce the wild cat population, feral cat population out there, and also was able to attend an event for community conscience, which puts together a lot of nonprofits that provide social services to people in the Thousand Oaks area in what they call the under-one-roof building. And we, in the Mardi Gras, were crowned King Buffalo Bob Rickard, and Almeida Babcock was made the queen. Additionally, had some interesting meetings, was able to meet with two city council members from Thousand Oaks, council member Jackie Irwin and Tom Glancy, to discuss fire service issues, and felt that the outcome of that meeting was good, that we were able to sit down and talk and work on those issues together. And I think- And I think our CEO, Marty Robinson, for attending also. Also had a meeting with residents in Santa Rosa Valley and Southern California Edison, who have been attending meetings and trying to work with the residents on the issues of high-power lines that will be placed close to people's homes, and it's a lot of concerns out there. But I think one of the good outcomes of that, whether we can change that project or not, is that Southern California Edison has agreed to make presentations to the board and present their master plan of what they see, where they will be putting new transmission lines in the future. So they said they'd be back, I think, in April to the Board of Supervisors, and I'm hoping we'll also get that in digital form, because our county right now doesn't have that information in their maps easily accessible. So looking forward to being able to look more at a master plan as we get more demand for energy, new energy sources with alternative energy. We will have more of these lines, so it's important that we can, you know, cite development away from them. For example, in Santa Rosa Valley, these homes are very close to the power lines, and they want to put more even closer. So knowing in advance where those lines are going, I think, will help us also. Also, let's see, we had a group of people from the Church of Latter Day Saints offer to plant trees in Santa Rosa Park. They can get a couple hundred volunteers. We're looking at May 8 as a date, and right now we're looking for people who are offering funds and trees, because we have all the labor we need, and hopefully we'll be able to partner with them. It's something that we weren't able to do, didn't have the budget for, so it's wonderful that they have chosen Santa Rosa Park as their project to do a major tree planting, so I'm excited about that. And then finally, looking at Item 12 on our agenda, we had a work being done to the Royal Santa Rosa, which includes removal of, I think, nine willow trees. And it just made me think, hey, maybe we can take those willow trees and stick them over in the park. We're looking for trees, we're looking for trees. And it was also nice on that Item 12 that it was, the bid came in 40% below what we had, our engineers had estimated for that project, and he just realized that what a good time it is right now for those capital work projects. And with that, I'll just ask that we close in honor of the people on this list, and thank you very much.
Also makes you wonder what kind of profits people were making before, you know, on this project.
Supervisor Zeragosa.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I'd like to share that last week I attended a community leaders briefing in Calabasas hosted by Senator Fran Pavly and Metropolitan Water District of California. Senator Pavly discussed, you know, the proposed 2010 water bond issue that's coming up, and also the Delta's deteriorating ecosystem and the state's water supply reliability. Also Jeff, you know, the GM from Metropolitan Water District spoke about the water crisis, the big Delta conservation plan, and numerous other problems that we're going to have if we don't get that bond passed. It's important that we correct and also conserve water. Also, one of the other things that we all probably noticed too, you know, we, I'll be heading to DC here pretty soon, probably in the next couple of hours, but that nice article that came out on the Star the other day about Oxnard, Thousand Oaks, Ventura County, rated the 10th best public place to live amongst 67 other regions, and I think we're just very, very happy that we live in such a great place as Ventura County, so I'm sure that the folks read that too. Also, my staff member, Luis Alarizano, attended the grand opening over at the Oxnard Real School District, the New State of the Arts Science Lab. It's a great project, because the students are going to have a great time doing experiments and getting familiar with the surroundings and just really going out and looking at the environment, and it's a great, great program. In addition to that, in the next probably 45 minutes, I'll be taking off to LAX to head to DC with the Regional Defense Plan, the RDP 21. There's about 11 of us going to DC. Joining me are council members from Ventura, Oxnard, Wayneimi, Camarillo, and the RDP 21 staff, and we're going to meet with the policymakers out there to hopefully get some more work for the basis and also more jobs and talk to the admirals also there about bringing some more work for both bases. So I'll be taking off here probably in the next hour or so. And I understand it's snowing pretty heavily in DC right now, so, but anyway, somebody's going to do the work, right? And also want to adjourn in memory of the folks on this list. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you. I'd like to start with adjourn in memories. Lost two people I'd like to call out in Ojai. Marty Fujita was co-founder of Food for Thought, nonprofit group aimed at improving schoolchildren's diets, got, did a tremendous job of getting locally grown food into the, and salads into the schools in the Ojai Valley. And Sherry Skinner was a career banker at the Ojai Community Bank. And I'd like to adjourn in memory of the other people on this list. I attended the National Homeless Conference down in Los Angeles, was happy to see we had a good contingent from Ventura County down there, and some good valuable ideas and trends that are going on nationwide were on display there. So we're very fortunate that it showed up in Los Angeles. Usually it's much further away, harder to get there, so I'm glad we were able to take advantage of that. Wanted to mention a few comments here about the library, and I'm sure somebody has it, but I've just asked Supervisor Long, maybe being on the committee, if you have any information about the subsidies that, you know, the Port Wayneimi thing and stuff, not today, but if you have any of that information. And then with regard to the question about Brian Brennan, Supervisor, it's not uncommon, Supervisor Zeragosa also has a council member on his staff, not an uncommon thing, and we've talked to county councils and city council, and there's no conflicts and stuff. All right? So, but thank you for asking about that. But what I'd like to do is use my comments to just tell you a quick story, an inspiring story, right, that is out there, but St. Bonaventure and Our Lady of Assumption. Our Lady of Assumption is the elementary school, Catholic school, and St. Bonaventure is a Catholic high school. They have a husband-and-wife team as principals, you know. The principal of St. Bonaventure is married to the principal of Our Lady of Assumption. So the Our Lady of Assumption has for years been making colorful and very pleasant notes that we drop in to bag lunches for the homeless people when they come to our One Stop. So a homeless person gets this thing, you know, "Hope you're having a nice day," you know, "Mary," you know, "Great tree," et cetera, et cetera. So they've been involved in our One Stop. So our One Stop was finding that the homeless people were having trouble getting there because they need a bus token to be able to get there. So they went to Our Lady of Assumption, and Our Lady of Assumption started to raise some money for that, and St. Bonnie got in on it, and the principals both challenged the schools. And so it was a competition to see who could raise the most money for the One Stop. And they just recently, on February 1, they had the meeting, and we had Kate Mills and Mike Powers were over there, and the schools met in the gym with the high school on one side and the elementary on the other side, and all of this applause, and the high school came out with their $790 worth for bus tokens, and the elementary kids came out with their $1,700 and clobbered them, right? So, anyway, it's just, it's just an example of, we talked about this, that we can't get all the work done that has to get done in terms of social services in this community by ourselves with the government, with the government budgets like they are and the funds that we have. We have to partner, and this is just a wonderful partnership that's been developing between the One Stop Center and the local Catholic school and high school that are right down the street from that One Stop Center. I really applaud our staff, and I really applaud, you know, the administration of both schools for getting involved in that, so thank you very much.
Let me share just a couple of thoughts real quick regarding the council member that works for me. The, I just want to share with the folks who, that he works for me on a part-time basis, a couple of hours in the morning. And the reason I have the council member working for me is that he's my liaison between myself and the city of Oxnard, and if we have any concerns with the city of Oxnard, he's very eloquent and very efficient in taking care of those issues for me. But he works for a couple of hours a week for me, does not make any policy, you know, for myself, and we've already have talked to our county council and the city of Oxnard attorney, so we're okay with that. But just wanted to share that with you. He does not make any policy for the county or for myself, you know, works a couple of hours a week for me as a liaison between myself and the city of Oxnard. And one of the reasons I've done that is because I want to form this partnership between agencies, whether it's a school district, whether it's a city, or any other businesses, I'd like to form that partnership, and he's well-suited for that. I just wanted to share that for information. Thank you.
Supervisor, thank you. Supervisor Bennett, I want to, yes, please.
I just got to make a comment on your thing. I think it's true what our CEO said, that elementary kids are cuter, but they'll probably work harder. I think that's tremendous. What you say, I agree, because government can't do it all, and government shouldn't do it all. The people should care for the people in their own community, and I think that's a tremendous opportunity to do that, and that much money's going to go for a lot of bus tokens, a lot of people are going to make sure they end up at this place they need to be, so thanks.
And just think how linked those kids are starting to become with a population that wasn't even on their radar, probably.
Yeah, and the idea we can give back, I think it's tremendous. Thanks for bringing that.
Okay, thank you all. I'm going to try to move quickly so we can get some items heard before Supervisor has to move on to the snowy east coast. Supervisor Bennett, thank you for attending the homeless conference. I think it's invaluable to have all of us, and we all do in our respective districts, have a role in working with the needs of our homeless population, whether we do it through infrastructure, like many mansions that does such a great job, or we do it through task forces that are formed in Simi Valley and Ventura that work on the connecting folks to what their needs are. And certainly, Oxnard has done a tremendous job with the revenues that they put towards finding housing for the homeless. And there are many models, and they all need to be evaluated. We're working on, we, in the sense of the community commission, is working with the Homeless and Housing Coalition to provide an update to the community on where are we with the tenure plan, and that should be available in the next few months. And I appreciate any time we take a look at some new model to do that. I think it's healthy, and we're always looking to share the wealth with our city partners and the region in the solutions that we have and need for the homeless, so thank you. And connected to that, I'm going to provide the board, and I know you're familiar with this program, and that is the Have Your Taxes Prepared and E-File Free. And that is basically the Earn Income Tax Credit Program that we help and our social services departments, and our 211 is also helping with that this year, and reaching out to folks who certainly at the lowest income level of the community to help them to file their income taxes, because they get and earn income tax credit. And that certainly, every penny in these days helps them and is of value to our community in assisting that population. So I wanted you to know that that is, that information is out there and available. It's also in Spanish, and they're doing a great job with a good coalition of folks to reach out to assist. Again, it's the Ventura County Financial Empowerment Partnership. It's a community collaborative that does this, and it's another example of how we're helping via non-government ways with coalition of folks to reach out and help folks. So I thank you. The other thing I'd like to just make a comment on is the, I attended two days in a row the grand opening of the Santa Paula Art Museum. There's a new art museum that's opened in Santa Paula on 10th Street in the old, what was the original Limoneira Building, that was built over 50 years ago when Limoneira had its start in the valley, and it is now a Santa Paula Art Museum for Fine Arts, and it is an absolutely beautiful building, interior space, and just a tremendous amount of work, again, from private sector and people in the community who just love the history of Santa Paula and of the valley, and of course, the farming community. It has wonderful, wonderful collection from the Botki family and the Shively family, and if you get a chance, please go by and see this beautiful building that has now been converted into this art museum with a lot of love and affection from many good founders in the community who helped to establish the foundation and this art museum. It was wonderful to go to, both the ribbon cutting and celebration. And then I'd like to send out a loud thank you to the Ventura Music Festival, and specifically Cheryl Heitman, the executive director, and our own Stephen Perrin, who's Associate Justice for California Second District Court of Appeal, and that they did again this year, reached out with the music festival, young people who play instruments and went through a process of being selected to gather their talents and take them to visit our very own hospital, and people who are in our hospital, in our Ventura County Medical Center. And they played instruments and entertained folks. I'm sorry, this year, it wasn't the hospital, I read too fast here. They actually went to the Juvenile Justice Center and performed, and they performed workshops for teens in the morning and performances by an Afro-Cuban band, and they provided entertainment and opportunity for kids to be introduced to music and celebrate, and it was in the Juvenile Justice Center, the Stephen Z. Perrin Juvenile Justice Center. So appreciation of the music festival for having this program yearly and that they went to the Juvenile Justice Center this year. Well, I don't want to go in too much of the bad news at the state. It's a moving target. I was up at CSAC for two days last week and working on the task force on reforming government, of which, as I provided to the board this matrix a while back, it had four columns of potential reform groups that were looking at what we could do to reform our dysfunctional government. Well, now it's down to two columns. Repair California, as you've read, has not, probably will not qualify, it hasn't been able to raise the money to collect the signatures for the Constitutional Convention model that's been proposed by Repair California. California Forward still has some potential. They're waiting, frankly, for some legislative actions, but they too have limited funds and haven't been successful at fundraising, and that was the one that potentially may have two initiatives on the ballot, that, one that I think would be important to us, which is you can't put an initiative on the ballot unless you identify new money, pay to play. We'll see if that is able to make it to the ballot in another method, if in fact they aren't able to successfully pull that one together. So there was a lot of discussion about the transportation component of the swap that's been proposed by the governor. The Senate Democrats are working on an alternate transportation funding swap. If that does see the light of day, it may be valuable in addressing perhaps what is another initiative that may make the ballot, and that's the League of California Cities ones that I think we should take a close look at. It has, I think, some difficult, not difficult, outright severe applications for this county, for the county government work. So stay tuned. I'd like to adjourn in memory, two folks, but one I'm going to call out, and I expect all of us in the community and this board will join in this, and it's for our very own William Henley Hank Brokaw. Hank passed away February 17, known to all of us, veteran United States Navy man. He taught high school science and math at Nordoff Ventura Buena for 10 years. During the last years of his teaching career, he toyed with a hobby of his, which was raising avocados, and he started by planting 500 seeds in his own backyard. He is the Brokaw Nursery, of course, and he is really known as an industry leader. The LA Times had a significant obituary on him because of his role in the industry and the whole grafting of seedlings to avocado plants to protect from some root rot issues, and just a wonderful family, the Brokaw family, and very important in this community, but Hank was just a delightful, delightful man, and he will be missed by his community. My last comment is one that's a little more uplifting, and that I have the pleasure of taking a moment here to recognize someone who has served 30 years in this county, someone who's been loyal and faithful and provided excellent service to this county, and I'd like to step over and present this to our very own Christine L. Cohen for her 30 years of service to our county. 30 years of service to our county.
Hi, Alex. Thank you, thank you very much. You must have started when you were 15 years old or something?
Well, Christine, I didn't ask for the whole story, because I thought that you'd be blushing even more. But I know 30 years flies by, but we know the path you've taken to where you sit today and admired for it, respected, and we appreciate your service to our county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. They're all there for you. Okay, now...
They're all dogs, I can...
Oh. All right, we are going to move now, as the board asks, because before we start our 9:30s, we want to move to our items 26 and 27, which are to be heard together, but acted on separately, of course. And so, we will move first to item... And Ms. Krieger is here, she's running down front, to item 27 first. So, that will be up before us. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the board. Ms. Robinson, I appreciate you taking us early in the agenda since this required a four-fifths vote. We are here today, first of all, there are two paired items. First, to request authority for transfer to consent to assignment of the parcel known as Anacapa Al Marina from the Almar Corporation to CNL Income Anacapa Marina LLC, which is a Delaware corporation. And then I'll come back to that. And then, along with that, on your next item, just so you understand the linkage, there are a couple of lease amendments that we believe to be necessary, just to make very clear for our staff, county staff, and for my successor someday, how this is to work, and that has to do with not getting rent on income twice and making sure transfers are handled appropriately. This particular transfer, I have to tell you just a quick moment, tells me now that I've been here quite a while, because I'm still missing Harry Nelson, who was Almar, and I know Randy Short, who's here missing him too. And we're past five years now, I think, six or seven. Pretty soon, that Harry's gone. The family is selling this and three other marinas to this corporation. It is a REIT, which is why you see the complicated corporate structure. It's a real estate investment trust. And what's concerned to us, in fact, I have for you an outline of how this works. Now, this flow chart can be a little intimidating, and in fact, it's the streamlined version of the actual corporate structure. The bottom line is that our less C, our new less C is at the very bottom, CNL Income Anacapa Marina LLC. You see CNL Lifestyle Properties, which is part of the REIT on the top. The main reason for this complex structure is that real estate investment trusts cannot operate properties. They can own them, they have to be very much at arm's length from the operation. The good news, I think, for the county of Ventura is you see the little dotted line down at the bottom, Anacapa Al Marina LP is going to be the manager of this marina, continuing, and that's Joyce Nelson and her family, Almar, just as we have now, with Randy Short still in charge of the operations. So, this is a significant event. It is a assignment of a leasehold. We have satisfied ourselves in the harbor department and with our outside counsel, who's of council to county council, that the assets are adequate to handle this. They own a number of other marinas and golf courses across the country and other resort The transaction will not close until county council and the CEO's office have fully satisfied themselves that this is all in order. We've been working on this for months altogether. There's a lot of paperwork involved, as you can imagine. So, I don't know if you have any questions about this particular part of the transaction. Our biggest concern was knowing exactly who our less C is, where we go for the rent, what else they do with their structure. It's really, we need to understand it, but it's less of our concern than who we actually... Who's the contractor with the county?
That's it? Questions?
The question I have, we... This is an ownership change, not an operational change, right?
Correct.
And then, I was looking at the... There's four transactions that are going to happen, and from Anacapa Marine down to CNL, and from CNL down to AIM, and so forth, and we're looking at about $9 million transaction there. And the sub-list less C is going to be AIM, is going to be running the operation.
Correct.
Randy Short?
Correct.
So, really, that is going to change just the ownership.
That's correct.
And then, the benefit to the county is the 2% assignment fee, which is another $200,000 that's going to go into the general fund, into the enterprise fund.
Correct.
Which I think is...
Thank you for correcting.
Enterprise, not general fund.
Nice idea.
So, I think, you know, there's, you know, the... Basically, what you're just doing is doing the ownership changes with a intricate change of ownership here. The only question I had too was, why are the $200,000 out of escrow? Why are we doing that?
Well, because we don't want the closing to be complete until we have the cash in our hands.
Okay, so...
So, it will be deposited into escrow, and the documents won't be filed until that check is transferred to our account.
Okay, so, that happens, and then escrow releases the $200,000.
Right.
Okay. And of course, other details, and if we have to, then the CEO and county council are going to help execute all those documents and contracts.
I have to tell you, our fiscal unit has already given the wiring information to the escrow company, just so there's no confusion.
And then, of course, you know, the funding is there, and they're a well-structured business, you know, that's going to take well-funded also, large company, right? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, again, this is item 27. Pleasure to the board. I have a card. Randy, that's right. Oh, he says he doesn't. You know, that was my concern. Are you sticking around? But I understand you are, sir.
We have our ways.
Randy Short, yes. You can't get rid of me that easy. But we're looking forward to this as we move forward. This is a well-funded company, $2 billion company, so we look forward to having that behind... Those resources behind us.
Great. Thank you, sir. Okay. Pleasure to the board. Motion of the second? All vote?
I was wondering, who was going to get the first award for that?
Okay, and that passes unanimously, and then we are now back to item 26, the related item.
Yes, item 26, you'll see, is a relatively short lease amendment, and there are really two items here. One is, because of the corporate structure, as income passes from one company to the other, we want to ensure that we do receive rent on the entire gross receipts the first time it's received. After that, as it's divvied up among the companies, we don't expect to receive rent again. It's already been paid. That's the post-rent income that's being moved. That's not very clear in our lease now, because we have a different structure than this is. So, we wanted... I really wanted a lease amendment to make sure that that was clear. The other thing is that we have provisions in the current leases, which are mainly, not entirely, but mainly smaller, more closely held corporations, that transfers for estate planning purposes or for within the family are allowed without a fee and without... And this, they have requested the same thing, that within their family of corporations, if for some reason tax law changes and they need to create a new corporation or do whatever they need to do, that happens without the county's involvement. Merely a notice, not a full transfer. So, those two changes, we are requesting to the lease, to just make sure this is all cleaned up.
I have a question.
Yeah, I do have a question. I understand that this is just basically transferring ownership. My question is, is this an opportunity where the county can try to get some monetary benefits out of this, or the public can receive some benefits, like free slips, or some way that we can actually go into this? They need to do it, and we have an opportunity. And I'm wondering if we can look at those opportunities instead of just going straight across the board, just switching ownership?
Well, we're transferring the existing lease. I mean, the county is transferring the existing lease from one owner to the next, and the price for that was set based on the existing lease. To now come in and change the value of the lease, I mean, I guess we could raise that issue, but I think there's the risk it would disrupt the transaction. This particular leasehold is our highest per foot rent payer, so that money does get used for public benefit. They also do contributions for public benefit around the harbor because of the fact that they're... Which is why we were so concerned about the management. But that might be a county council question, but from the transaction side, for us, it would be difficult, once the transaction's in motion, to make changes that would change the value.
It just seems like if we have an opportunity to bring more benefits to the public, even though we may think this is, you know, fair and we're doing well already, doesn't... I wouldn't hope would preclude us from trying to do better. So, if, when county council's done discussing it amongst themselves, we can find out whether we have that opportunity, because it seems to me, as I mentioned before, they have to do the transfer. I mean, they're in a bind there. Not to take necessarily advantage of them, but with that we have this opportunity, I would like to see if we can use it. Does county council have an opinion whether we can?
If it's placed in the context of negotiating a lease amendment, it's really a matter for negotiation.
Mm-hmm. So, yes is the answer?
Well, but as to a transfer, we have an obligation to transfer if the less C meets certain requirements. If there's adequate funding, I mean, there's a list of requirements in the lease. If they meet those, they have the right to a transfer from the county.
So, that's the question.
We've requested the lease amendment to clarify it, but...
And I would just ask, is that your view of it? We don't have the ability to ask for more? We have to just, if they meet the requirements, transfer?
As with respect to the lease transfer, yes. With respect to the lease amendment, Ms. Krieger said, "We're asking for that."
Correct.
So, if there is no negotiation occurring really with respect to the amendment, then there wouldn't be an opportunity to negotiate, as it were, over this issue that you raised. But as for the transfer, if they meet the requirements, they're entitled under the lease to have the transfer. You've already approved the transfer under 27. You're working on the lease amendment issue under 26 now.
And I think that's where this would be the appropriate place to ask that question.
Well, and that's the question. If it's an amendment that we ask for rather than they ask for, then there's a question of negotiation.
Supervisor, four.
I think we have to be real careful, though, that we're the... We have, you know, a lease, somebody has the ability to transfer a lease when ownership changes, that kind of stuff. We've got to be real careful about adding all these extra things in here at the end, because we just take uncertainty out of this whole program. And, you know, you're going to get people saying, "I don't want to do any business with the county." All of a sudden, you have a contract, and then all of a sudden, gets before the board, you negotiate the whole thing, and boom, then all of a sudden, there's all these extras that come out. We have to be real careful about that, and I think this is a... This would be the wrong thing to do at all. If we want something else, when regular leases come up and the regular renewal, we can do it at that point, but in the middle of just a basic transfer, and you're trying to put clarity is really what you're trying to do in these amendments, which I appreciate, because the worst thing for all of us is to have obscurity that makes it very difficult for county council and the rest of us, and owners and everything else. So, I think it's the wrong time for us to be doing anything like this.
I understand.
Yes.
Lynn, our percentage then does change here at all, right?
No.
We get the same regardless of how the money goes through the process.
Correct. There was a lease amendment, I believe, last year or in 2008 that somewhat increased the rent on this parcel, and we did not... I mean, that wasn't part of this transaction.
And in fact, you know, with a company having a $2 billion total assets, you know, I think makes it even stronger, I think. Yes, sir? Okay.
And I would say it also ups our potential of being able to, for example, get funds for the, you know, boating lessons for children, or just something pretty minor. But it just seems like, in the future, when you have these opportunities, instead of just, you know, across the board, look at seeing what else we can get. I think that's just something that we should always be asking.
Remember, as part of the PWP, when you mentioned, for example, the sailing lessons, every marina in the harbor, as they rebuild, is now required to contribute the value of a slip, a 35-foot slip every year toward youth programming in the harbor. That is something that you have already done, and I think that was in 2008, the spring of 2008.
Mm-hmm. That's one example of what we can do, so I'd like to see more. But I'm not going to obviously vote against this. I just, in the future, if we have those opportunities, instead of just straight across the board transfers, let's see if we, you know, particularly in situations where they haven't much choice, see if we can get a little bit more.
Any other questions? Seeing them, we have a motion. Is there a second? Then the motion is to approve. Is there a second?
Yeah.
There is a second. Please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work and good discussion on that. Appreciate it. And Supervisor Eric Gose, yes?
And Madam Chair, I'm heading to the snow.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
Be safe. Did you sign everything before you left, John? Okay.
Stay warm. You're going to miss California.
Yeah. For those who are here for our time-certain items, Supervisor Eric Gose is off to a meeting in Washington, so he has to leave, so... All right, then, it is a little past 9:30, and I know we have these time certens. We'll move right into them, and I have the pleasure of the first one. And I would invite Dan Roblesdowne, who is our district librarian for the wonderful Blanchard Santa Paula Public Library in Santa Paula. Dan is the district librarian, and we're going to... I'm going to have the honor of presenting them with their centennial resolution. Dan was recently recognized as California Library... By the California Library Association, Public Library Section with a distinguished public librarian award of excellence. And he's been with this library for years, knows it and loves it. And I'll just read from the resolution some points, and step down to present this to you, and invite you to speak to the success of the library and those who have contributed so much to our free public library. Please, all of you, step down. These are the trustees of the library district. Santa Paula, the Blanchard Santa Paula Library District is celebrating their centennial, and they'll be celebrating it on March 6th. And it has been a landmark in this community for years. It is located on 8th Street, and everybody knows and loves the library. It has a wonderful mural out front and a very engaging space. The library began in 1906 with a generous donation from Nathan W. Blanchard, a prominent family, ranching family in the community, and it has started out and still is a free public library. Over 100 years, it has grown in building size and in services to accommodate the needs of the community and to make sure that the population being served and their needs are met. It currently offers programs such as after-school homework center, family program night, preschool storytime, their adult one-on-one literacy, family literacy, wonderful literacy programs. We have an opportunity to celebrate with them many of those. And they have a computer lab that's available for the after-school homework in kids and for adults. It has adapted the changes in technology for this library to hope to maintain both the comfort, the service, and the respect for all those who visit and come through the doors. And they have achieved excellence in public library service throughout this county and recognized by both the community they serve, the leadership in the valley. And we certainly thank the library trustees and the district librarian, Mr. Robles, and we celebrate with them a centennial celebration of this library. And I'll step down and present this to you, and please, if you'd like to say some words, Dan.
I certainly would. Thank you very much. My name is Dan Robles, and I have with me today the president of the Friends of the Library, which incidentally is 45 years old this year also, and that's Pat Alderson here on my left. And next to me is a very dedicated coworker, and her name is Andrea Robles, and no relation, all right? And to my right is the president of the Board of Trustees. And to my right is the president of the Board of Trustees, Susie Scudley. And it is a great honor, and I love the sound of all of those words. We have been around 100 years, and believe it or not, I have been there almost half of those 100 years. I have been there for 43 years. I don't look that old, and I'm too young to retire, but here I am. And I'm very pleased that the Board of Supervisors have decided to honor us with this very great proclamation.
And we thank you. And there you go. We're going to turn around and do a little photo op here. We can move over here. If you want, do an informal, right? Would you like to take a picture? The strength of the libraries, um, unwieldable.
Well, we're a very small group. I mean, we have a big membership, but only about six or seven working members. So this is a big undertaking, but we definitely appreciate Dan. And I served on the board for many years, and now I'm president of the Friends, so my dedication is there.
And we thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to turn around here. I look forward to being at the celebration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's going to be a good weekend.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the board again. Thank you very much. Appreciate this a lot.
Not often do people recognize libraries, except maybe when they're done closed.
Supervisor Parks, would you like to...
Shall I go?
Yes.
All right. And Martine maybe can take a photo of this next one, too. I think this is the first time in county history. How old is our county now, Roberta? Do you know? Since 1873, I think this is our first time we've had Miss California in the board chamber. So I'm excited. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors for Nicole Johnson, Miss California, USA. If you'd like to come down there, she's going to be representing us in the USA competition. So congratulations. And the resolution reads, "Whereas Westlake Village resident Nicole Johnson was crowned Miss California, USA on November 18th, 2009. And whereas this outstanding achievement follows upon Nicole Johnson's selection as the runner-up Miss California, USA in the 2007 competition. And whereas Miss California, USA Nicole Johnson plans to use her winning achievement to show other young people the importance of working hard to reach their goals and how education is key to making challenges and realizing dreams. And whereas Miss California, USA Nicole Johnson graduated with honors from USC in 2007 with a bachelor's of arts in communication, focusing on the field of sports entertainment. And whereas Miss California, USA Nicole Johnson was in eighth grade when in 1999, another Nicole Johnson, the niece of former Thousand Oaks mayor, Alois Xena, was crowned Miss America in 1999. And I remember that. It was really exciting. And Alois was there and watching it, and it was very exciting. And we know lightning can strike twice.
I heard that.
Whereas Miss California, USA Nicole Johnson is to be commended for her dedication to the public good and to helping build better citizens for the future. This resolution from the Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in congratulating you, and we wish you the best in your competition. And that's on May 16th, 2010. Is that right? Oh, my goodness. The Miss USA competition, happiness and continued success in all your future endeavors. So I'm going to come down there and bring this to you. And if you'd like to give us a few words and tell us a little about yourself and how exciting this is for you.
I'd just like to say thank you, and thank you Supervisor Parks for honoring me. It was great to receive the email from my mom that you wanted to. And thank you guys for also honoring me. This is really great. It's been fun thus far, and I can't wait to get to Las Vegas and represent the great state of California, not to mention Ventura County. So hoping to win it. We'll see what happens, but watch live on NBC.
It's not often we get a beauty queen in here. Yeah. It's not a beauty contest, it's a scholarship. Yeah, USC, I guess.
Got it? You're used to this, huh? All right, thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
We wish you well.
Good luck. We'll all be watching.
Let me know if I can help.
All right. Okay, thank you.
We wish you well. Thank you for coming in. Yes. It's always good to have beauty in the boardroom. Okay. Well, obviously, she's tenacious, too. She's going again, so... All right, we are now on to our...
Congratulations to her parents, too. That must be very nice.
We've got a few minutes before our 10 o'clock, so let's go to item 25. Shall we do that? Everybody says yes. Item 25. Good. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I've provided some materials to the clerk of the board, and thank you for passing them out. We thought you might be interested. I'm Debbie Fromm, and I'm the Assistant Director for the Department of Child Support Services. I am not the typical person that speaks to you from our department. However, I'm extremely passionate about the issue of customer service excellence, particularly in the public sector, having worked in that arena in the private sector. Raising the bar in this area for our department, as well as at the state level, is a significant component of the work that I do. So I thank you in advance for allowing me to be spokesperson today. There is no fiscal impact to this action. That's the good news. But we think you should know why. Ventura County Department of Child Support Services is extremely well-funded. We are one of the best-funded child support departments in the state of California, and the reason is because of this board. Historically, the Board of Supervisors in Ventura County has provided us with unfailing support. Many years prior to the state taking over the funding for our program, we earned incentives, and every year, the Board of Supervisors allowed us to keep those incentives and to reinvest them into the program. The result is that when the state took over the funding for child support in California, they built all funding allocations for then and future years on the foundation that was already in place. We started with a very strong footing. We remain very well-funded. That's the good news. The child support program is statewide now. We're on a single statewide system for case management, a single statewide system for the telephone system as well. Any county can do the work technically of any other county on behalf of families. We are benefiting from the support that you gave us. However, right now and in the future, the state is looking to adopt a shared services model. That means they are looking to shift workloads from extremely well-funded departments, from poorly funded departments to the better funded departments. It would be a logical question to ask, why in the world would we take on the work of another county? Makes sense, and here's why. Given the propensity or the trend to equalize that workload, we decided that we would step in and be proactive about having a voice in our destiny. We excel in many areas in the child support program. Our call center is just one of those. For example, the average wait time for a caller to be answered in our call center is 21 seconds. We have maintained that bar for quite a few months now. Thank you very much. 95% of our calls are answered at the first point of contact. Therefore, less than 5% of those calls need to be transferred to a case manager to assist the customer. I'm sure all of you, as have I, had the experience of calling an IVR and being transferred multiple places. We don't do that in Ventura County. The state requires or expects a model of 90-10, meaning that 90% of the calls are answered at the first point of contact. No more than 10% are transferred. We far exceed that. We transfer under 5%. Our call center is 90% bilingual. That has been very deliberate on our part to ensure that we are able to provide the same level of customer service excellence to families in Ventura County, whether they are Spanish or English speaking. We are currently, and have been for quite a long time now, rated the number one call center in the child support program in California. And we are the only call center in child support counties that has that level of bilingual service. It is in the best interest of Ventura County and the families we serve if we retain management of our own calls and keep them answered here in Ventura County. We have advised the state that we can absorb the Santa Barbara calls of approximately 5,000, 4,000 to 5,000 a month within our existing resources. Not only are we well-funded, we are extremely well-staffed in our call center. Again, that has been deliberate so that we could position ourselves to assume this work and control what work is shifted to Ventura County and also control, as much as possible, what work is not shifted out of Ventura County. Beyond Santa Barbara County, we have also had discussions with the state that if the state wishes for us to take on additional counties, we will need additional staffing. That means additional state money shifted perhaps from other child support departments, and that means additional jobs here in Ventura. So for all those reasons, that answers the question of why we would be crazy enough to take on the work of another county. Please be assured that the families in Ventura County, whether they are Spanish or English speaking, will continue to be able to rely upon us for the excellent customer service that they're accustomed to, both before and after we assume calls from Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Well, thank you. No, please stay at the, as we have, one, I appreciate the thorough report and the statistics you've provided, and certainly remember the days when things were a little tougher with our child support division as a result of the state. So I know you've worked hard, the entire department and employees have worked very hard to make sure that your service is top-notch and you have a strong reputation. Are there questions from the board members on this item?
Thank you.
You know, I do also want to just compliment, in addition to, you know, the services that you provide in making sure that, you know, parents pay for their children. But you, also the concept of actually finding those parents and using DNA and do that to assure that people are responsible for taking care of the children that they conceived.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I also just wanted to pass on my compliments. I know you bring, as you said, a lot of passion to what you do, and I think that that's infectious with the rest of your staff. And you deserve a real pat on the back for the kind of tracking of statistics to confirm your continuous improvement. And that's quite a, it's quite a record that you've got in front of us. So thank you very much, Debbie.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, pleasure the board. Is there a motion on the recommended action? And a second? A second? And where'd it go? Okay, please vote. I don't know where Steve went. Pardon me? That item passes, and we thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right, board, let's take a two-minute break before our 10 o'clock. Is that good? Is that good?
Sure.[283.19]
...County Fire Department, the Ventura Moose Family Centers, National Charity League Tik Tokers, Channel Islands Fleet One Sailing Club, and Cypress Point Apartments. So again, we want to thank all these community partners for their continued commitment to make a difference in the lives of our kids.
As I continue to hand out the certificates, this program is wonderful. Children's Services Auxiliary does such a wonderful job for the many children in our community who need their help and couldn't do it without the many partners that are here. I love that time of year and KVTAs that does such a terrific job in that fundraising piece. I always run by to drop my check off, so I get a chance to see Stick Boy in. But it's just terrific program.
Supervisor Foy.
Thank you.
While we have them all right here, I just want to say, we consistently say in this boardroom that we all have to be the extended family for the foster children in Ventura County. And will you please help us take that message back to the organization? How much we appreciate everybody in your organization actually stepping up and playing that role of the aunt or the uncle or who is looking out and taken care of and being part of that extended family for foster kids who don't have an extended family outside of us. So, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Supervisor Foy, you want to say something?
I just want to thank all the people who've been involved. I know from my, with Lisa over here has been really all the heart and soul behind our foundation. I know how much hard work it is, and it was a difficult year, and it was difficult for a lot of people. But if people put their heart and soul into it and they work hard, they still can provide what's needed for all these kids. So, thanks for everybody.
Make a difference. You make a difference. Okay. And thank you Supervisor Bennett for bringing, again, bringing them into the boardroom so we can show that they are appreciated. And next up, our 10:15 time certain supervisor.
Thank you, and I'm sorry this is part of what was causing the confusion. And unfortunately, we missed by just a couple of minutes, but we have a Brown Act violation that is going on today. We have not properly noticed this item. But this item was noticed as a exact designation for this item was recognition, a special recognition and that is with all of the stress and pressure that is out there in the world of education to superintendent of schools, and a special recognition is the fact that we have here right now, I just don't see anybody who consistently stays positive, upbeat, and we can get this in Ventura County someone who won Pepperdine Superintendent of Schools for the whole state done, better than Trudy. of California, and that is Superintendent Trudy Ariaga. And I think that's why she was selected for the statewide award. And Trudy did not know until she started seeing her family and everybody else walking And then she was also selected for the outstanding superintendent in the tri-county regions of Ventura, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo Counties, in addition to the Pepperdine Superintendent into this room right now that this was a moment reserved for that special recognition. of the Year for the state of California. And with that, I'd like to read this resolution. So, it is legally, we talked with county council, this is a recognition, it's just I don't normally read the whole thing, but this is too remarkable of a career for us that we had to find a way to notice this thing. not to stop for a minute, Trudy, and do this. And so, I want to ask Trudy and Debbie Golden from the school board to come down while And I was, I saw Trudy look over her shoulder, and Trudy, she frowned instead of smiling we engage in this recognition a little bit. when she saw everybody, everybody show up. And I see Barbara Fitzgerald on the school board also. But this is a resolution. Yeah, there's some administrators here that may pay some price for this here, I imagine. Barbara, would you like to come down, please? Right? Thank you. And John Walker from over here. Do we have any other school board members here? Great. But whereas Dr. Trudy Ariaga started with the Ventura Unified School District as a And then we have esteemed administrators and friends of Trudy that are here also for student who attended K through 12 schools, she began working for the district in 1975 this recognition. as a parent educator. You got a nice sign back there, Trudy, so she doesn't have to hold it up the whole She's instructed students as a teacher in grades three, adult within the areas of regular time. ed, special ed, migrant ed, and adult education. She served as assistant principal, elementary and high school principal, and director of administrative support. She's currently the superintendent of schools, and she's been that since 2001. During her tenure as principal, she established a comprehensive student and family support system to include site-based social services, healthcare, and parent education classes. Dr. Ariaga is the past president and active member of the Ventura Education Partnership, which raises funds for grants for the district employees. Since 1987, she's also served as the chairperson for the Cheers for Children's Program, a district-wide food drive and resource for district families who are in need. Dr. Ariaga leads from the heart, always adhering to values that promote and support diversity, equity, excellence, and acceptance. She is a very organized leader who has established strong, ongoing connections with the employees, families, and children she serves. Dr. Ariaga's values are evidenced in the district's vision, mission, and governing principles that were established through her leadership. She is a masterful team builder, an emphatic listener. She promotes collaboration and treats all people with dignity and respect. I read those kinds of lines a lot in resolutions, and this time, it certainly rings much more true, which is why I wanted to stop and pull that out with Trudy. Under Dr. Ariaga's leadership, student achievement has consistently increased at all grade levels across all subgroups in Ventura Unified. Ventura Unified now embarks on the greatest financial challenge in the history of California's education system. As a result, Dr. Ariaga has to work tirelessly and diligently to uphold what is morally and ethically correct. One of her favorite mantras, which many of us have heard many times, weave the cloth so tight that no child will fall through. And if you think about having that be your life's work, which is to try in your community to weave the cloth so tight that no child falls through, there are very few things that I can think of that would be more satisfying to say, "That was my life's work." And you certainly have saved so many children from falling through that web by your effort to hold that cloth as tight as possible. Dr. Ariaga is recognized as an educational, social, and political leader in the community, county, and at the state level. She believes the key responsibility for educational leaders today is to be well-informed on the political issues in education and actively involve in innovation and resolution of those issues. So, she has received the award from Pepperdine and from Region 13, and we are in Ventura County, take great pleasure in honoring Dr. Trudy Ariaga for her commendable work within the Ventura Unified School District and the community. And now is the time for that applause. We've all been kind of... The frown has turned to a little bit of a smile, I will report from up here. And now I'd like to have Debbie Golden from the school board and president of the school board, right?
Thank you Supervisor Bennett, and all the supervisors for bringing this resolution forward today, and also for seeing the benefit of working closely with the school district. In these terrible budgetary times, we certainly appreciate your partnership and awareness that working together, we can make a bigger difference for the children and families in our communities. Now, for the reason for this celebration today, we so appreciate this recognition of our fantastic superintendent, Dr. Ariaga. I think the resolution clearly stated what we believe at Ventura Unified, that Trudy exemplifies a courageous, authentic leader to over 17,000 students and over 1,000 employees. When I think about Trudy's leadership, I think of something Maya Angelou said that is fitting. What she said was that people don't remember what you say, they don't even remember what you do. What people remember is how you make them feel. And Trudy makes everyone she comes into contact with feel valued and cared for. So, we are really happy about this wonderful recognition given to Trudy today on behalf of the Board of Education. And everyone in the audience here from our Ventura Unified family, we thank you for recognizing our superintendent, and we salute Dr. Ariaga as Superintendent of the Year. One more time.
Okay, your turn.
Well, everybody in this room knows that what I really am is a big crybaby. So, I have to tell you though, first off, someone must have talked to my mother to know that I peek at Christmas presents under the tree, which is why you would go to all of the trouble that I seek and peek and find things out. But I honestly, until I saw a few people, it just made no sense why they would be here. But when I saw the group walking in, it was, you know, one of those moments in life that... Sorry. Okay. One of those moments in life that, I'm saying to you now, that to see people walking in who are my friends and my colleagues and who I care so deeply about, that you would take your time today to just come and celebrate an accomplishment means a great deal to me. And they're very, very busy people. I know that for a fact. And, I mean, in this room are people who, if I have ever earned an award, there is absolutely no way that I could earn awards without the likes of you. Wait a minute. My goodness. I really want to do some recognition because I mean this most sincerely, that people don't earn recognition without being surrounded by incredible people. That's the way it works. And if I've done anything right, I've surrounded myself by incredible people, and I've also been very, very privileged in my life to be born into a family where I've been surrounded by incredible people. So, I'm going to start with the board. Do I have a few minutes? You know, you look around the state of California, folks, and districts are crumbling right and left, and the districts that are staying steadfast, the districts that are getting through this are districts that have really, really competent board members. Board members who truly care about the well-being of children, board members who come with different expertise and experience, but board members who come with one common goal, and that's to do right by our children. And so, there is no way, no way, a superintendent could earn Superintendent of the Year without an incredible board surrounding them. So, I thank the three of you. Also, as, you know, as we collaborate through these tough times, the leadership that is in this room, there is no way that someone could earn an award or recognition without being surrounded by competent leaders and leaders throughout the organization. And, you know, Steve Blum, who is here, is our VEA president, working in partnership with our teacher association. There's no way we could get through this without doing that. Our, you know, I see the three assistant suits that are here, Rich, Jeff, and Joe. My goodness, you know, the job that I do would not be realized if I wasn't surrounded by Rich, Jeff, and Joe, and Steve Bailey, and Anthony Ramos, who isn't even here and he just had surgery. What are you doing there, Anthony? Our executive cabinet, and then, you know, just the people in the room who are our administrators and our teacher leaders and our directors, and I'm just looking to see who's here. And then, of course, the parents who are here and the community members, that it is our pleasure to serve your children, and thank you for working in partnership with us. And what an incredible district we have because we have the support of our parents who, you know, sometimes I think they're on the payroll because they're with us, you know, every step of the way. So, I truly, truly thank you for being here today and taking time out of your very, very busy, busy schedules and not paying attention to me and coming when you know you shouldn't be here. But I thank you for that. And then lastly, I just want to say to my family, too, that my daughter Daniella is here, and my brother Gary, that just pushed me over the edge when you walked in, and my sister Toni, and my beloved mother. Again, I've said this many times, if every child was as fortunate in this community as I've been, to be so privileged to be a part of a family who loves you and conditionally and supports you and keeps you grounded, that's, you know, that would be a gift that every child. And so, we do our best to make sure that every child in our community gets just that from us during the school day. And, you know, to the supervisors, thank you for this. I just, I appreciate it. And to me, it's an honor and a thrill to be, most importantly, surrounded by the wonderful people in this room, and for you as our supervisors to see how very fortunate we are in the Ventura Unified School District to have such an incredible group of people serving our children on a daily basis. So, thank you, everybody. Now, go back to work.
We're going to do a picture here, and to bring this to a close. So, I think we'll have the school board members, do you want to try with everybody? We get these giant group pictures. How about it? Everybody want to come up? We'll step further in the back, and after we finish with the picture, usually things sort of fall apart. So, I do want to say this, I want to give a special thanks to Cindy Cantle on my staff, who coordinated with, on your staff Cindy, it was, yeah, Martha Forrester, to pull this surprise off, right? But to get within about two minutes of the announcement was a remarkable job. So, everybody, you have earned your 007 badges, right, in terms of that. So, let's do a quick picture with school board members here, and then we'll have everybody come up.
Congratulations, Trudy.
We'd like to come down, approach, we just go up here. We'll have everybody have a quick picture. Would you like to come down, approach? We just go up here. We'll have everybody have a quick picture. No, no. Jim, I know your voice. Oh, my gosh, Jesus Christ.
also a time certain item, item 19, and it is to amend the county parks' rent and fee schedule. And Mr. Van Dyke.
Morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Mrs. Robinson, for the record, Ron Van Dyke, Deputy Director, GSA. I'm here this morning to ask for an amendment to the rent and fee schedule at a public hearing. I'd like to clear up a couple of misconceptions I've seen in the paper already and why I'm here with fee increases at this time, tight belts and everything else. And unfortunately, with the Parks Department being an enterprise fund, our belt is about as tight as you can get because without the revenue resources, we don't operate. I was unable to find any means other than rate increases to balance our budget for 10/11. There was no other cuts to make in our budget without affecting the customers directly or staff. The paper seems to be focusing on one rent fee increase, and that's the $50 increase seems to be the magic target that really only affects four spaces out of our total inventory. That $50 fee is four. All the rest of them are 47 for the full hookups at the beach. So, it's really only a $2 increase, only four spaces were affected by the $5 increase, just because they're significantly different than the rest of the spaces in that campground. Most of the spaces are gravel and sand composite. These spaces have concrete pads, a room for an extra vehicle, and that's why we separated them from the other ones, to break them out. I'll take any questions, I just wanted to give you that background.
Are there questions? Supervisor Foy.
I had the opportunity to have a long talk with Paul about this whole deal, and when I first looked, I said, "Oh, stucco parks going from $2 to $22, so it's getting very expensive." But he straightened me out, it was really $2 additional. But if I was to look at all the costs that you have in your organization, you end up with, probably don't have a lot of maintenance increasing costs?
We have maintenance increases.
For material, what do you have that's really hitting you?
We've been cutting our PO accounts, literally shorting our PO accounts and deferring basic maintenance. We pretty much only do needed maintenance, as we are right now, just to keep the balanced budget. What I'm looking at right now is even reducing our tree maintenance to cover costs, which is going to be critical if I start reducing routine maintenance on trees, which is one of our biggest budget items. Our next big budget item is pumping our holding tanks for our RV parks.
We probably should do that.
That's a huge expense. It's going to cost us about $60,000 this year to pump tanks.
Really? And so, a lot of the fees are going directly to those kinds of things, where people are going to pay for that pumping? You know, the user is paying for the use of some of this. Some of the situations we have, though, but a lot of your expenses are going to come from typical salary expenses?
Yes.
And what have we done over the years to try to control those costs? I mean, a lot of other departments are pretty tight, they can't raise fees, and so they're having to balance these budgets. How are you doing that?
We've hired actually some new employees, so our salaries basically went back down recently. We had some turnover, and so we're starting at the baseline. Unfortunately, that's what's kicking us right now is merit increases. Those are built into the budget manual, and we project to pay those. That's going to be somewhere in the $40,000 range this year, roughly, which is what we're looking for salary benefits, about where it was last year. We've restructured, I've underhired to fill a position of one of my staff, we reduced a staff member by 50%. I'm sharing now with another department, so I've reduced my staffing by a half an FTE to do that. We actually moved out of this building, moved out to the Satacote yard to save $30,000 a square footage cost. So, we're moving and trying to do everything we possibly can to reduce the costs, and this was very painful for me to have to go through and raise fees to get my budget to balance.
Right. I guess if for some reason you didn't have these fees, what would happen? I think you said you...
I would have to probably lay off one or two employees.
And then if you laid the one or two off, what would happen?
We would directly impact the customers because now I would have to try to balance how we service the parks. Right now, I can barely service the parks with the staffing that we have throughout the county. Some parks don't get serviced at all on certain days just because I don't have the staff to go there. I'd have to reduce by one ranger and one maintenance person is basically what it would amount to. And ranger staffing, we use the seasonal to make up the gaps as it is.
So, are we in a position, if you didn't get some of this fee increase, you'd lay those people off? Would you close any parks because of that?
No. Then that's part of the problem. Under the state OGAO's guidance, and I personally talked to the state OGAO's folks, the grant folks, any state parks that have state grant money tied into them cannot be closed for budgetary reasons. If they are, we only have two years to reopen that park with a... a staff member by fifty percent. I'm sharing now with another department, so I've reduced my staffing by a half an FTE to do that. We actually moved out of this building, moved out to the Satacote yard to save thirty thousand a square footage cost.
Yeah.
So we're moving and trying to do everything we possibly can to reduce the costs, and this was very painful for me to have to go through and raise fees to get my budget to balance.
Right. I guess if for some reason you didn't have these fees, what would happen? I think you said you're...
I would have to probably lay off one or two employees.
And then if you laid the one or two off, what would happen?
We would directly impact the customers because now I would have to try to balance how we service the parks. Right now, I can barely service the parks with the staffing that we have throughout the county. Some parks don't get serviced at all on certain days, just because I don't have the staff to go there.
Right.
I'd have to reduce by one ranger and one maintenance person is basically what it would amount to, and ranger staffing, we use the seasonal to make up the gaps as it is.
So are we in a position, if you didn't get some of this fee increase, you'd lay those people off, would you close any parks because of that?
No, then that's part of the problem. Under state O.G.A.'s guidance, and I personally talked to the state O.G.A.'s folks, the grant folks, any state, any parks that have state grant money tied into them cannot be closed for budgetary reasons. If they are, we only have two years to reopen that park with a plan. So I literally sent a letter to O.G.A.'s with our plan on how we're gonna reopen and budget this park in two years. If we can't do that and don't meet those obligations, we pay back every dime that we spent of the state's money, and that park has to be paid back in full.
So you could be in a position of paying back millions of dollars...
Yes, sir.
...to do that?
Federal or state, and those, and it's any monies that we use within the last ten to thirty years, depending on what grant cycle it was.
Right. And I know that, talking with Paul, we had some conversation, you may be coming back here in a few months with some other proposals on possibly looking at ways to generate income or to move it. I know you, like KOA Campgrounds, you went to a private person to take over that and to do some of those things to relieve the opportunity. I'm sure some of these may not have as much potential as some of the ones that you've already done that with.
No, we have two lease operators right now. We actually got rid of one, and no park in your district that was not maintaining the park to our standards, pretty much refused to do it, and we took that park back over. It's barely making its way, but it's paying its bills as for us operating it, but we cleaned the park up and got a lot of positives out of it. We saw some parks that aren't producing as well as we would like to because unfortunately they've gotten bad reputations over the years because of lease operators. Camp Comfort's a perfect example of that. I still talk to people today that say, that place, it's a dump. It's, obviously, you haven't been out there in a while, because our previous lease held that we had in there, we terminated and just gave it a terrible reputation that we're still living with. But we're getting some of those customers back, our numbers are going up.
Right. And then, so with these increases, how is this affecting the marketplace? I mean, comparatively, if you're gonna go to one of these parks and you're gonna pay two dollars more, you're gonna pay that fifty dollars for that special space comparative to a private park, because at some point you raise the price enough that people just say, I'm going someplace else.
Exactly, and that's my fear. I have to be very careful walking that very thin line of basically pricing us out of the market, and we go in the opposite direction. We start losing revenue because we're losing business.
Yeah.
Before we did this, I did do an assessment of our local competition within the local areas, State Beaches, Emma Wood and McGrath, and Point Magoo are all running in between twenty-five to thirty dollars. Emma Woods are our closest competition for the beach for dry camping, and they're running thirty dollars, and we're gonna be at twenty-seven with the exact same service up on the Rincon. So we're still three, gonna run three dollars less than the State Beaches. Lake Tassee is, their cheapest camping is dry camping, and it's twenty-five dollars, and they go all the way up to sixty dollars for beachside, and Venture RV is fifty to seventy-five for a full hookup with a ten percent fee on top of that.
Right. So we are then, in the sense, even with this rate increase, we're giving the public a little better value in the sense of what maybe some of the privates are doing.
Yes.
Some of the other private organizations may have more facilities or more amendments?
They do have some more amendments.
Yeah.
Venture RV does, it's a little bit bigger park, may have a few more amendments than we have, but we have the beach, the beach parks have the beach.
Right.
I read a blog this morning that, you know, I'm paying twenty-five, twenty-seven dollars for a million-dollar view.
Right.
And they were totally happy with that. So that's the amenity that we give them that nobody else can give them.
Right.
You know, you're right, you have the beach right there.
I guess I look at it from a standpoint, I just don't like the idea of raising these fees, but I guess because, but you're gonna come in the next couple of months and give us hopefully a plan for the future, because you're at the point, right now, you raise these fees, pretty much you're more expensive next time, and then you're at that point...
We're, we're in, starting to get into this, at a point right now where we're gonna get into a cycle of, what are we gonna do next year?
Yeah.
And that scares us.
Yeah.
It really does.
There's no question, because it's gonna get more difficult.
And we're finishing up the board letter to come back. It's actually the follow-up to the Pyru board letter from the planning for the new construction and stuff, that's the follow-up to that. We've expanded on it to cover the areas of the money shortfalls. So that's what we're coming back with.
Thanks, appreciate it.
I know that we have, as a board, decided to separate out the fee schedule from the budget and do it first, but in this case, I would want to actually see what we have in our budget to avoid having to do fee increases for park use. I would rather have this with our regular budget time. And then I also recall a few years back that I was able to target some funds, and this was funds for, I believe, landfills that were, was to go specifically for parks, and I remember, you know, the board voted on it, and I don't see it in your report. So I guess looking at both, what funds are available, so you're not operating with a staff that's not sufficient for the demand that's out there, and secondly, that we're able to maintain the parks to the best of our ability with the funds available. So I'm, I'm not really supportive, really, of increasing fees at this point until I can see what other funds are available, and I think, I feel like it's deja vu that we have already looked at this to some extent, found some funds available, and I'm not seeing those applied. It's a hard time in the economy, and people are, you know, they can't afford to go, you know, stay in a hotel or anything, so the cheapest vacation you can get basically is camping. So I feel like this is kind of a double whammy to the public to have a fee increase on something that's, you know, the only vacation that they can get because the economy is so bad. But my thought would be to continue this to the budget discussion, to see if we can find some other ways to avoid having to increase these fees.
Do you have any...
I'm not aware of the additional revenues.
The landfill fee?
I'm not aware of any of those. If we had them, they'd be in our budget, and I don't know.
Mr. Dursey remembers, yes?
If I recall, that was about three years ago, you know, during the budget time, and it was a one-time issue where the landfills, we got some additional landfills that they dedicated to the parks for that year to make things whole, and then they came back into the general fund as part of general fund revenue.
Sort of one-time fund. It's not my recollection, so...
We can, we can...
As I understood, it was a new source of funds, it was an ongoing revenue stream, so, but let's look into that.
It is absolutely an ongoing revenue stream, but it was the general fund revenue that we moved back into the general fund in the subsequent year. Yeah, the revenue, the revenue from that specific source is there, but it was a general fund...
We use it as a general purpose revenue.
That's correct.
And so we're balancing with all of those revenues.
Yeah, we treated that as a one-time contribution to the Parks Fund in that particular year.
We might wanna look at the actual agenda item that approved those funds and have the history of that.
Supervisor Bennett?
My, I guess my question would be just timing. If the request is that we hold this off until we're adopting the budget in June, it may be difficult for staff to be able to create the budget for Parks and Rec. But is that, is that what you were talking about, holding it off until June or just holding it off? And so I can appreciate maybe holding it off till we have a full board back would be another way to, you know, another way to do that.
Take a look at that.
And certainly to find out about the revenue stream that I was looking to...
Sure. So while we, while we just hold this off for a week or two, get a full board here, get the answer to these questions, so that we, so you're able to build your budget knowing one way or the other where this, whether this fee increase is in there. Does that work?
The one impact that it will do to us is timing with the delay. We try to tie in this to the seasonal, our seasonal change, the seasonal change is one April. We don't, our rent fee doesn't tie to the board cycle because we'd be in the middle of our actual use season and have campers out there when we bump it up right in the middle of our summer season.
If we do it in the next week or two?
If we do it in the next week, we'll probably be okay. If we can get back in here and have the answers within the next week, we'll be fine.
Let's, let's...
I don't know if we need a thirty-day lead, I've been told we need a thirty-day lead typically for when we approve these increases before we can apply them, but I don't know if that's actual, if that's a factor or not.
I haven't looked at that, we'd have to check it out.
Well, I reckon we'll bring it back as quickly as we can, answering the questions that you've requested us to follow up with.
If you could give us the scenarios, if I lay this person off, this is what it is, if I do this, this is what it is, so we understand what we're doing. I mean, because the rest of these departments don't have this ability to raise revenue, and they're having to make it work, and we're asking everybody to do it, and I think Supervisor Park makes a good point about the fee thing.
There is a history, however, of our parks deteriorating to the point that we had to, you know, we'll go back and look at this language that Supervisor Parks mentions, but our parks deteriorated to such a point that we had to invest to kind of bring them back to a level, and I think you're already hearing, that our parks aren't being maintained right now, other than what absolutely has to be done. And so it's not gonna help us if they deteriorate so badly that people can't, don't wanna use them or can't use them, but we'll be back with the information as quickly as possible.
I guess the big thing to me is if we closed them and this payback of millions of dollars that we, the parks didn't have any money, right?
We don't, no, we don't have the revenue.
Because they come out of your...
We don't have the revenues. Right now, my bank balance is six hundred thousand.
We're talking the state here, the state who's threatening to close all the parks. How dare they think they can come back and get money from this summer?
Well, I know, that's one of the things I would look at, is do they really have the right to come back and ask that money?
But it's in the contract, that's the problem.
Oh, great.
It's in the grant contract.
Well, happens to us.
They have to be open to the public.
And as I recall, you know, this was a motion that I made and was able to, you know, that we got support at the board for, and I think it was close to the, it was over a hundred thousand dollars, potentially three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, if I recall correctly. So it is a revenue stream, and I think it's something that's certainly to look at again if we have to, but I just, sorry to see that it went back to the general fund. So with that, shall we just go ahead and move to, we wanna have this continued for our next meeting?
Yes.
Well, come back as quickly as the CEO can bring it back based on things, with the report on what those funds are and how that...
All right, there's a motion to continue this until which time they answer the questions and bring back to us, so we'll move as quickly as possible on it. And that's the motion and a second. And I'd just say this, we did position the parks years ago as an enterprise fund, and they've, they've crippled along every year, and I think that when we look at our customers and the great job the parks have been doing to improve our infrastructure in our parks so that people really do want to come and use our parks, and I think our parks are valued by all of our residents, so I would hope that we can work our way through this one and not be in a position like the state to close more parks. That's just, I would not support that, so...
You know, and that is a whole nother issue, too. Because they are closing parks, there aren't places to go camping anymore, so, you know...
And I've been to Fort Perea Beach, and I'd pay fifty dollars to have that spot. It's prime spot. Thank you for the work, we'll have it brought back to as soon as possible. Thanks. And that motion. Who? Steve, did you vote? Vote. Okay, that passes. Thank you. Okay, then that wraps up our time certance, and we're going to go now to, we've done twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. And then we do item twenty-eight, human resources. Thank you, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Long, members of the board, and Mrs. Robinson. Melanie Roy from the Behavioral Health Department. Item twenty-eight requests your approval and authorization for the Human Resources Director to establish one regular position, a program administrator for our MHSA programs. It's a transformational programs liaison, and the purpose of that position, if we were to look at formal models, we would may have called it an ombudsman in a medical model or formally. This position really is going to assist us in assuring that family members and consumers seeking services are able to navigate our system, and I think most importantly, we're looking for this individual to help us identify systems issues that might be impediments to that, so that rather than one-time fixes, we're able to really create a system that is transformed and is user-friendly. And if you have questions?
I just have to ask you, I think you probably have an answer to this, but with this one percent, you're getting your money, it's been consistent. Have we seen a consistency in the last year, and are we expecting it to grow? How are we dealing with this?
Yeah, the MHSA funding lags about two years in terms of revenues that we realize, and so, of course, there is fluctuations in the funding.
So right now, we're realizing the good times and we haven't realized the bad times?
We're in the middle of the sort of good times. We're, you know, we did see a dip in our allocation.
You did?
Yeah, we will, and we will, based on the revenues. What we've done, though, is we've taken a good look at those projections, we've looked at projections in terms of realignment, and we have a five-year plan in regards to spending the funding, spending the funding in a conservative manner that will account for those fluctuations. And so far, we've been frankly, I'm happy to say, dead-on in our projections and how we're spending the revenue, and so we're confident that we have a sustainable level that we're, we're using to go forward with these programs.
So when you balance out just the amount of money you do have, you know, this is what you would say would be the most important out of all the jobs you could hire somebody to do?
This is a really important position.
I can see it, yeah.
You know, I could speak to that, too. Having started with when they first went to the community with the Mental Health Services Act and all the focus groups, and this is something that was strongly supported particularly by family members and people, when you're having a crisis, which you are, if you're looking for these kind of behavioral health services, you're having difficulty to begin with, and then having a pretty big, complex system to deal with, that the NAMI, the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, family members, they're all really strong on trying to get someone that I think is equivalent to like Winston Wright in the Planning Department, a permit coordinator, but here it's that kind of person that can help you find the right services that you need if there is a problem, you have that wonderful ability to get feedback. That's why I think it's important to have that person be an employee of the county so that they have the ability to bring that feedback and not, and not, and end up with a better system in the long run, which is basically what we're doing also in the Planning Department. So I'm very supportive of this, and I'm really glad to see it come forward, and I'm, I think this is probably one of the best benefits, one of the many benefits of the Mental Health Services Act, is going to help gain access to our department for people who are having trouble.
So, and that's what you said? See, this is the navigator for these people that hopefully in the long run then will be faster, effective, maybe even be more cost-effective if people get through and through the system sooner and understand the system.
And it may help people stay at lower levels of care.
All right, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I'd definitely move the recommendation, I'm really glad to see this come forward.
It's a motion and a second, please vote.
Took years in the making, huh?
And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work. Item twenty-nine is acceptance of our Budget Development Manual. The tomb.
Good morning, board members. As you're probably familiar with now, this is our annual kickoff to our budget cycle with the Budget Development Manual, and we would ask that you accept the Budget Development Manual as a working document and its overall departmental guidelines of developing their budgets, and accept the internal rates and charges that we have in the Budget Development Manual, including all the ISF rates that you're, were presented to you a couple of weeks ago on February ninth by our ISF departments. And then the final approval of all these rates and fees will be as we approve the final budget, as your board approves the final budget in the June timeframe. Notable changes in this particular, particular year's edition is the performance measures in section four, on page thirty, we have some performance measures requiring our departments to indicate certain performance measures as we gear up and gear toward a programmatic budgeting in the future. This is our goal, that out years will be, we will develop, we kinda have a little bit of the cart before the horse, but we wanna develop some performance measures for certain programs for each department, and then we'll work into budgeting at that programmatic level as we go forward for, for next budget cycle. The other, Revised County Budget Act, the state has some revised, revised the County Budget Act, and we've incorporated that information into our Budget Development Manual. On page seventeen is, you notice that the CEO is now responsible for compiling the preliminary budget and also recording revisions during the deliberations by your board at the budget time. And then the tabulation previously required by the order controller is no longer required. Clearly, it's up the order controller on how they wanna reconcile what they need to deliver to the state under their requirements for the final adopted budget that they deliver to the state and what we require locally for our budget deliberations. Some of the key assumptions we have in the Budget Development Manual are, I start off with property tax revenues. We're assuming that property tax revenues will be basically equivalent to what we budgeted last year, as far as secured property taxes, but what we budgeted last year, I guess in a good way, is a little bit higher than, we expected a four-and-a-half percent decrease from the previous year, so we budgeted that in this year. When the assessor actually came up with just assessed valuation, it was minus about two and a half... When the assessor actually came up with just assessed valuation, it was minus about 2.5, 2.4%. So we're back to assuming that minus 4.5%, which is actually down 2.1% from what we're expecting to get this year. All said and done, the budget numbers will be roughly equivalent to what we budgeted last year in our secured property taxes. Overall, what we're looking at...
You didn't, I don't know if anybody else followed that one, but I didn't. We start, I'm gonna, you tell me where I don't have it right here, all right? We budgeted about 4.5% down. We ended up coming in at about 2.5% down, right? But for this year, what you're gonna start to build with is that we're back to 4.5% down?
That's correct. So we're minus 2% from what we're expecting to get in this particular year.
All right.
Now, the assessor is not, is not far enough along in their calculations to really give a good indication of, I have discussions with him regularly, and he says, "That's about as good a number as we could give you at this particular point in time." So it's basically minus 2% from what our assessed valuations were last June 30th.
So the assessor is in agreement with you that 2% is...
I should say he's not in disagreement. There's a fine, yeah, he's not, he doesn't have any better information at this particular point in time, correct?
All right. He's back there nodding his head. Do you have, I mean, do you have anything? I mean, you don't have any disagree, you're just sort of saying you're a blank slate?
We do know that the assessed valuation, the Prop 13, 2%, normal 2% increase, is minus a quarter percent. So we know right off the bat, we don't have a 2% increase in the base valuation.
We don't have that.
So we know it's a minus quarter percent off the top. So all things being equal, if everything was equal, we'd have a minus quarter percent.
Okay. Mr. Goodwin's over your shoulder, but that's it, my request, but I think I'd rather, I mean, well, go ahead, you're there now, but I'd rather, I just wondered if, I mean, let's go ahead and let Mr. Dursey finish this part, if you don't mind, yeah? All right, thank you.
Other significant key assumptions we have is our retirement contributions. Our retirement contributions overall, we knew that were going up by roughly a 20% increase. We do see some relief from that relative to your board's and SEIU and management's 3% contribution pickup by most of those. So that has offset significantly general membership contribution rate increases. But that doesn't take into effect the significant increases in public safety retirement contributions. So that's where we're expecting a lot of, a lot of stress going into the next budget year, is in the, in the public safety retirement contribution rates. We've also implemented...
Can I miss the number again, that retirement contribution? You're expecting it to go up by what?
Overall, about 20%, but that's actually offset significantly by the 3%. So that's, the number right now is only a four or five million dollar increase. We're expecting all of that to be in the public safety areas. Does that make sense?
All right, but what percent are we expecting our retirement contribution to go up by?
The contribution rate percent is going from a about 2 and a quarter percent increase for general membership, about 7% for public safety membership as a part of their salaries as an increase. So for example, we went from about 31% contribution for public safety members to about 37 plus another 3/4% on the employee pickup, employer pickup of the employee contribution. So all in all, it's about a 7% increase for public safety. On the general membership side, it's gone up from about, overall about 10% up to about 12% and another quarter percent for the employer pickup of the employee. So it's about 2 and 1/4, roughly speaking.
Okay.
Those are the ballpark numbers. So out of that 2 and 1/4, you can see that a 3% contribution by the...
Okay, and the total aggregate increase is?
The total aggregate increase is a little over 3%, 3 to 3 and 1/2, 3 to 3 and 1/4. I can get you those numbers, but it's a little over 3%. I want to say 3.1%.
Got it. Thank you.
We are using a composite rate for general memberships this year. We've combined Tier 1 and Tier 2 into a composite rate. What we are seeing is that to evenly smooth out the contribution rates for the Tier 1 members, we were seeing Tier 1 membership rates go up into the 80% range. If you combine that with the county pickup, we were looking at close words of 90% contribution rate, so that would be, so what we did, we decided to come back to a general membership composite rate, which really comes down to about in the 12% range, a composite rate for those, for those members, because the general membership contribution for Tier 2 is significantly less than Tier 1 because of the pool, the number of people in the Tier 1 pool is in the 250 range, and they have to spread a huge liability from Tier 1 employees over those very few people, which equates to a significant unfunded liability.
It's, yeah, and it's when you're starting to talk about percentages. The reality is, it's a certain dollar amount we owe related, and it's how we spread it out. In previous years, we have attached dollar amounts to Tier 1, and we've attached dollar amounts to Tier 2, but as the pool shrinks, you have distortions in the budget system, basically, because if somebody has, if a department has people who have a lot of Tier 1s, then their costs are higher. And so it's a fairly unfair distortion, but those people who retire out Tier 1s and they think they have a lot of relief, you know, but the total cost is there regardless of how we spread it. So what we're saying is that this year, it's now time that that pool's getting small enough that it makes more sense budgetarily to come up with a rate that spreads it across, combined rate.
That's correct. What we've done is we've taken the unfunded liability and spread it among all the general membership rather than differentiating between, here's the unfunded liability for Tier 1 divided by Tier 1, here's the unfunded liability for Tier 2 divided by Tier 2. We've combined those dollars and then spread it across the entire general membership. And then, and then public safety membership still has the same process.
I appreciate the logic of this. I'd like to, I'd like to understand the impacts of it, so what I'd like to know, could I get a breakdown of, of, you know, what are the, where are the Tier 1 people and what departments and that kind of stuff? Because it does, either way, it has a distorting, it creates a distortion here. On the one hand, departments that have a lot of Tier 1s are in a sense, for this year, if we do it this way, sort of transferring those costs over to departments that have Tier 2s. And, you know, we, I would like at least to know and understand what's being transferred, all right, back and forth. So if we could have a breakdown, that would be helpful.
Sure.
I'd like to have that fairly soon, just so we...
Yeah, and I think what we'll find is that it's not going to make a significant difference from a budgetary standpoint, for, there will be a couple of departments that have, that are small. I'd give you an example off the top, for example, the coroner's, medical examiner's office has just a handful of employees, and they had a Tier 1 membership. Well, that's going to go down. That cost, that cost for that particular department is going to go down. But they're a very small department. A human services agency or somebody like that is not going to see a significant difference because they would be paying the, you know, a smooth rate regardless because of the spreading of all those costs. But we can get you that information, no problem.
All right.
The services supplies, that's our 2,000-level expenditures, we're assuming, are going to increase at zero. We've given no cost of living adjustments to departments for those, those cost of service supplies. As we noted a couple of weeks ago, the internal service funds rates are flat going forward. And the other item is the unemployment insurance benefit and cost has been reinstated. Countywide, it's about a $1.6 million cost for next fiscal year, because of the unemployment insurance benefits, we're running out of money and we need to reinstate the charge for departments. Our plan for the, for the upcoming weeks is next week, we plan on bringing you our mid-year 2009, 2010 budget adjustment board letter, which will include a number of budget adjustments for this particular fiscal year. The following week, we will plan on being, bringing forward preliminary discussion on next year's target budgeting. And a lot of this will have to be worked on relative to boards, board members being here and hopefully have full, a full contingent of board members as we make these presentations. And over the next several months, we'll probably be seeing a lot more than me, more of me than you would like, but, and our preliminary budget is scheduled for June 8th, and the final budget is scheduled for June 21st, and I'd be more than happy to try to answer questions.
Questions, other questions?
I have, yeah, I have some questions. Thank you. The, you mentioned about the performance measures on page 30, and so, can you explain to me a little bit more what the goal is or what you're going to try to be accomplishing here? Are these going to be performance measures that will influence what somebody's budget will be?
Not necessarily. What we're trying to do, again, coming back to this service excellence and continuous process improvement, we're trying to identify what their, what their real goal is, what they're trying to achieve in that particular budget, and what, and set a baseline and try to improve upon that baseline if possible. And we're not, at this particular point in time, using it as a budget hammer, we're using it as a guideline, a guide tool to coincide with the continuous process improvement package, where that kind of looks at, let's call them efficiencies and how to do things better, be more efficient. We're looking at more program, more program results orientation in this regard. Here's our program, here's what we expect out of our program, here's what we're getting. It'll take us a couple, few years to actually get those numbers. We're going to set baseline for this year, and as we go forward, we'll be developing the departmental program budgets in conjunction with these performance measures for those budgets, and then measuring them, and over several years, we'll have some historical data of how, how we're trying, how we're tracking, what our goals are and how, whether or not we're achieving those goals, and how we can improve upon them, and if we don't achieve the goals, how we can achieve the goals.
Great.
And whether or not those goals are, and that'll give your board hopefully more information of whether or not those are your goals.
Uh-huh. Great. Appreciate that. The, we, in terms of some of our policies, on page 9, we have the recommended minimum level for other general fund total designations, this is under reserve designations and contingencies, is 10% of total appropriations, and the long-term goal for total designations is 15% of total appropriations. So, what's, what you say, we had a long-term goal and the recommended minimum level. So you're, that's new for us, isn't it? Have we had our recommended minimum level being 10%?
These numbers have been in there for years. And we're still trying to achieve that GFOA goal of that 15%. And actually, GFOA has just reiterated those guidelines for, you know, what they would consider to be a solid fund balance. And they do recognize that some, some agencies that are huge would have less of a need for having a large fund balance, but large is still greater than the 15%. So they recognize, but they really set, this new guideline really set 15% as more of a minimum than as a, as a guideline. Under their old guidelines, it was kind of like, well, we think it's, it's a nice thing to have, but there's no specific number. But they, in the new guidelines, they've actually established that as their minimum, what they require minimum.
And what is our percentage right now for this year?
I would say in the 8% to 9% range.
So I was guessing, but they're in that 8% range. Thank you.
And we'll be presenting all that good information as we, as we move through this budget cycle going forward.
Okay, good. And you have, I have a couple of things. One, at some point in time, as we go forward, if you remember when I did a PowerPoint and we did a motion, we said, you know, because of the tightness of the budget, we were looking at the Acela system, et cetera, we said that we wanted the board to be more involved as we move forward with our reserve policy, our debt service policy, et cetera. Bringing this forward here, I'm trying to find, and I appreciated talking with the CEO, I'm trying to find the appropriate way. I'm not proposing any changes to this today, I'm just sort of trying to make a good faith effort to notify that we're still looking at these, and I think that the board will continue to look at, look at these policies.
We agree, and we expect that we can change these as we go along, but from our standpoint, we need to start with some assumptions and so we can move forward.
Start with something, exactly. That's what we're going to do, is let you start with something and then go from there. But with that, it would be helpful, I think it would be helpful for us under debt service to get a list of the debt service items, lease payment budget items, and see, you know, when are they going to terminate, when are they going to roll, roll off, you know, are they non-general funding sources that are paying those debt services, or are the, you know, or is that general fund? The, you know, is there, you know, just to, just to try to look at, particularly at the big things, I guess, I'm not trying to...
We were planning on coming back on a capital, you know, that whole issue that you requested on capital projects, so part of that, that, part of that we'll be talking about.
We'll be doing it, good. And then when you come back with the capital projects, my, my request would be that, you know, is this a new one or is it an ongoing one, you know, with the, with the capital project, right? What's the planned completion date for it? And what's the expected debt service, you know, sort of financing, you know, terms that's going to be required? You know, are there any sources of funds that could pay that debt service? And then, this is the, this is one that would be helpful, as you guys pointed out so well with the Acela's program, is just any, any kind of analysis of definite hard costs that are going to be incurred in the next two years if we don't do that project, whatever it is, you know? What would be the cost that we would incur? And with that, my only other, I think I didn't have any other, oh, I have one other question, and that is, on page 10, item 8, debt policy, the last sentence in that, Paul, says, "A formularized debt utilization review and coordination function is established and outlined in the county's debt utilization policy." But I couldn't find, the debt utilization policy part of this document?
No, it's actually part of the, I believe it's part of the admin manual.
Okay.
Administrative manual, countywide administrative manual.
Okay, good, that'd be great if you could do that. And so then, my, just my final thing is just sort of the caveat about, you know, year-end operating surplus and, you know, what we do with that fund balance and that policy, I think we'll want to keep that in play as we move forward, but give this as a starting spot. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Paul, going along with, is it also possible, if you're going to bring some of that back, that we have certain debts that are falling off, being paid off, but what we have projected that we're, because a lot of times you're projecting, we're going to do something in one year, two years, and this is what we're going to use to pay it, so we know both ends of this?
Sure, sure. And, okay, what we've rejected as far as what we said, this isn't a good deal, or, for example, our JJC office complex that we postponed?
Yeah, 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 what I'm trying, because a lot of times, you know, you're saying, we're planning on this because we know we're going to have the money because this is falling off, and this is what we're planning to use it for. Because I don't want to just do one side, because all of a sudden, well, we've got all this extra money, but we already have pre-plans. I would like to make sure we have both sides of this understood.
And that's what we're trying, yeah, hopefully in our presentation, we'll be able to lay out what our office's long-term plan is, sort of, for the debt service, and what we have lined up over the next five, six years as far as, okay, as this rolls off, we think this is a good opportunity to roll on this debt, those types of things. So we do, we do that planning and modeling regularly, especially as new projects come up and new, new suggestions from departments come up to spend debt service or incur debt.
But if we're going to look at this whole thing and this debt policy and see all the listing, it'd be great to list, here's all the projects, and our plan was these three will, over the next three years, be off, and that's what we use to fund this building.
Yes, hopefully, I don't know how big it'll be or how small it'll be, but we'll put the whole schedule out there for discussion and evaluation by your board at that time.
Good, okay, thank you.
Okay, auditor? You have a question?
Thank you, Chair Long. I just wanted to inform the board that our Governmental Accounting Standards Board has changed the way we present fund balance, and Paul and I met on this yesterday to see when we, and when and how we could roll this in and provide an education to your board as well. Instead of having reserves and designations and available fund balance, we now have five different categories we have to break this into. And so we're going to be working with Paul to see how to introduce that to you through this budget process, because we're required to start reporting in our financial statements as of June 30th of next year. So trying to incorporate it early, see how it works, and make sure that we can present the budget in that way so that we can also present the end-of-the-year results in a similar manner. So that will be coming back. It will affect your reserve designation policies, and so we'll be redrafting some of that to address this GASB pronouncement. Just a heads up to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? And so it begins.
Yeah, it's like, nothing else happens from now until June, you know? It's like, it's the only thing on our minds.
Yes, this doesn't incorporate any of the state's impact.
Exactly. It shouldn't be on the front. This is a draft. It should be on the front, this is a draft until the state acts, this is a draft. Okay, pleasure of the board, this is a motion to accept this budget manual.
So moved?
There's a motion and a second. I'll vote.
Paul, with what you're doing in budgeting and what you hear at the state, you've heard things like two-year budgeting, would we be able to do a two-year budget here and do it?
We could, except for, except for the state, frankly.
But I'm not saying if it was okay from the state's standpoint of that.
Right, mechanically, we could, we could do that. And as a matter of fact, we're always constantly looking out, we try to do almost a five-year budget in a way because we're trying to look out five years from now, saying, okay, what are our main stressors? And we knew, you know, a year and a half ago, that our main stressor would be retirement contribution. So, we could, we could come up with estimates in the two-year budget. When there's, the retirement contributions are so volatile, it's a little bit difficult to come with a, with a actuarially sound number, but we can come up with some estimates clearly. So, we could, definitely we could, but the state is the real, real kicker as far as funding.
Right, okay.
You know, what we do right now is we adopt our budget and then we correct it based on, in the fall, we come back and sort of correct based on whatever the state finally adopts. So, even if you adopted a two-year budget, you're going to be coming back mid-year to adjust out what the state did or didn't do.
I agree, I just, there's a whole push, there's a lot of states that do two-year budgeting, they, they've got away from this, like Steve was saying, all of a sudden, everything stops for just so long and you have all this, you get long, long-term planning is much better than the short-term the state does.
If a state went to a two-year plan, that would be very beneficial.
Yeah, and that's some of the push, I think, out there.
So, if they adopt that, then that would give us the same framework. Okay, that passed.
Thank you.
And we thank you.
I get to stay here for item 30?
You get to stay here.
30, correct.
For item 30, that's right, the issue on the county auditor controller assessor reorganization perspectives.
That's correct. Thank you, ma'am chair. This is our third and hopefully final report back to your board on the administrative elected officials. Generally, as you can, as you can see, follows the same, same format as our previous report. It outlines minimum qualifications, it outlines consolidations of duties with, with other elected officials and options regarding conversions from elected to appointed, although your board's hands are tied regarding the assessor as far as making that an elected official, unless, of course, you're willing to try to change the constitution because that's one of the constitutional elected officials that, that can't be changed by, by the local vote. So, there aren't a lot of options regarding the assessor for the conversion to, to an appointed official. Regardless, there are a number of options that your board could entertain and hopefully we've outlined them fairly well in the, in the letter and it's a receive and file and if your board has any other direction, send us. And that's on my report and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them, along with our friend over there, Mr. County Council.
Okay, questions, board?
I don't have questions, I mean, I think we, we particularly supervisor, you know, we were talking about saying, okay, let's, if we've reviewed the others, let's make sure we review these and it's good to have this sort of, get out there into the public from time to time so that everybody is, is aware of that, put this out there at this point in time. At this point in time, I wouldn't direct any differences outside of receiving file.
Well, my only comment would be, I certainly wouldn't try to do anything between, in this election cycle, but I, I think four years from now, if there is an interest in, in taking a closer look at where consolidations would make sense, both for the efficiency of operation and, and for the taxpayers, that the opportunity would be there through the four-year election cycle, but not, not certainly in this one. And, and there have been, we've, we've talked about this before, other counties who adopted different models, so there, there certainly is some research that could be done and, you know, knowing that the, there are limitations either governed by the constitution and/or the requirements of, of the office holders. So, just comments there. Clearly, there was a statement in here that said the assessor and the auditor controller clearly hold different minimum requirements and, and training, that may not be the best mesh in a, under-one-roof model. The office of the Director of Finance has been adopted in some counties where they have done some consolidation. And again, I, I haven't done the research to know if that is because, I assume it's been because of timing, in fact, openings of, of the office holder seat and also looking at the efficiencies of the operation. So, it's just my comment. Any other comments, interest, direction?
We have a receiving file.
Motion received and filed, is there a second? And a second? And please vote. Okay, so, thank you for the work, good to always have that come forward. Good to have that come forward for the board's consideration and appreciate it and that passes as a receiving pile action. Okay, now, next up, we have another opportunity to have the CEO look at, perform a review of the departmental organization's scope of the Public Defender's Office.
Yes, Madam Chair, your board directed us at, I think in early January to, as openings occur, to come back to the board and give you an opportunity to direct a study or review if you chose to. Mr. Dwayne Danmeyer will be retiring, he is our public defender. This is the first department that comes up under your new process and so, this is your opportunity to consider. There's some information, general information provided to you at this point in time and I do want the board to be aware that within my office, we have the authority, of course, to review a department at any point in time. So, with that, it's for your discussion.
Okay.
I think it's probably, Madam Chair, yeah, I think it's probably good that the first department that our policy came up under was a small department like this, public defender, pretty simple to understand, you know, no complicated issues there. I think that it is a good policy that we have that gets us started down this road. We don't have the public defender employees here all saying, oh, this is their, this is their open shot to, you know, for this, what we would think would be, you know, maybe inappropriate suggestions, you know, coming forward. But I think this, so I think this, this can be a good way for us to kick this off, but I have, from the Public Defender's Office, have not heard and don't have in my mind any suggestions for anything, but I very much appreciate having this opportunity to just stop at this moment and go, yeah, let's just, it's just a check and, and it may be a long time again before we as the board have that opportunity, because the CEO can do it anytime, right? Thank you.
Other questions? Our public defender is here, if you want to put him on the hot spot.
Public defender, have any suggestions?
No, I think, Dwayne Danmeyer, our public defender, I think the office is not really conducive to be combined with anything, it sort of needs to stand on its, on its own. I think the office is, I'm probably biased, but I think it's well-run and I think it's, there's been a lot of progress made in the last couple of years in terms of, of metrics and obtaining data and being able to react according to that. We've been able to, part of it's due to some reduced caseloads, but we've been able to reduce the backlog of, of cases that had been built up into getting some cases into more manageable state. And so I think that the efforts that we've made and the efforts that we have ongoing as far as process improvement, we've, we've reached out to the district attorney, to the sheriff, to probation, to try and deal with elimination of a lot of the paperwork. We have some, some probation reports that are going to be coming electronically beginning at the end of March. We're working on trying to get, discover, a pilot project to get discovery in certain kind of cases from the sheriff electronically. We're working with the sheriff also and trying to get lab results electronically. There are holdups in each of those dealing with the different computer systems that everybody's using and, and the capabilities, but we're moving in those directions and, so I think the department's moving in the right direction and I don't really see anything that needs to be done from a board level at this point to, to change the direction we're going.
I, I do want to thank Dwayne for initiating that effort. As you know, we, we had a, certainly our previous public defender, well-known and was in the department, in the position for a long time. Dwayne had the opportunity to come in, take a, even though he was part of the system, to take a, a fresh look and work with the assistant, Steve Lipson, to streamline activities and there's been a lot going on over the last two years and I appreciate the effort that you put into it, Dwayne. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I know that there's discussion right now going on at the state regarding a, a computer system, a shared computer system, do you know, in regards to the public defender and the courts? Do you know what the impact, potential impacts of that might be?
Well, the, the system, statewide system is supposed to combine all kinds of agencies, the Department of Motor Vehicles, the prison system, the district attorney, the public defender, the courts, and provide information from all counties available to every other county, so it's a huge thing. We in Ventura County have the, the Vascega system, which is well in advance of what most other counties have and our main thrust is kind of, let's not take any steps backwards and so we've been on the forefront of working with the state people to try and make sure that we continue to get at least what we have now. From my, the last briefing I had, they've established a particular software that the state is going to be using to, to export their data to the counties and I believe the current budget, the next budget, will have some money in there to, to begin that process. We're one of the counties that's on the pilot, we're one of the small counties, there's a small county and then a huge county, I think, that are pilots and we've been working on the forefront of that. From our standpoint, we are happy to be included and they are including us, we've been involved in the planning and so our hope is that we continue to get the data that we're now getting out of the current system.
Okay, so, do you see a benefit then if we end up in that system or having to take it on? I know we have had other instances where we had a better computer program and system than the state forced on us and then, you know, we actually didn't benefit.
We're, we're not going to have a whole lot of choice, we need the data from the courts. So, if the court goes to that statewide system, then we need to have an interface to allow us to get that information. The plan now is to basically get the, the information from the court and then deal with it in the system that we have now. We're not changing the whole Vascega plan to make it work, we're going to just, just make arrangements to get the data from the various sources, feed it into our system and use it. So, assuming we get that data, our system should operate pretty much the way it is now.
I'm glad if we can continue using that because, like you said, we did just spend a bunch of money, put it together, right? And it's a very effective system, so.
It is very effective.
Don't want to be in a situation where they're telling us we can't use it, we have to use theirs and that would be a problem.
Good.
On that same issue, though, there will be costs involved, of course, in terms of that, developing that interface and how it relates to each one of our partners in the, in the justice system, so. And we don't really see the state coming down and helping us with that side of the, of the issue.
Although, I did sign a letter of support for the courts to attempt to get some federal money to, to do that. And so, I think they are somewhat hopeful that that money will be there for the pilot, which is essentially would be our county.
Thank you, Mr. Danmeyer. We have a public speaker on this item. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Carol Dean Williams, I am a personal witness. I brought two other witnesses, Martin Heckerman, who is a certified court reporter, who reported the corruption of Mr. Danmeyer and Mr. Schwartz, see the frown on his face. I would like you to ask Mr. Danmeyer this question. San Francisco has an elected public defender. I've researched the public defenders in the state of California and he has provided you false information in your packet and you're only giving me a few minutes to speak. I want to read you the certified record that Mr. Schwartz said, "We should have dismissed this case," unquote. This is Linda Goldberg, 20-year deputy DA. And the court, even on its own, brought up the fact that Mr. Williams was well-known in the community, well-known in running for offices, well-known for the board of supervisors, well-known at city council for years and years. And the court even commented that perhaps he's a thorn in somebody's side and, and a pest, words I never used. So, the court perhaps is familiar personally with Mr. Williams and may have some kind of experience dealing with him in the past. And the public defender was standing right there in the court, the public defender, all right? The gist of this is the court reduced it to a infraction. Penal Code 19.6 says the public defender is not entitled to represent an infraction. He went ahead and represented an infraction. Him and Steve Lipson and Michael McMahon. Here's the second witness, Melissa Perez. Greg Totten, name is on both of these, they destroyed the tape recording that proved they were dealing with an innocent person, destroyed the tape recorder, okay? Here, Judge James P. Colinger falsified the minute order, he did not swear, Officer Thompson, but he let him go ahead and testify, okay? Melissa Perez certified that Judge Colinger lied. Now, the public defender wouldn't represent me in that infraction case. Oh, we can't, Mr. Williams, it violates Penal Code 19.6. Well, that's what I said here, okay? So, Judge Colinger and Ms. McCarthy, his clerk, falsified the minute order, so on June 11, 2009, I sent Presiding Judge Kevin McGee, I says, "Judge, they falsified the minute order, here's your clerk." "Oh, I, I cannot and I will not intercede in the proceeding heard by another judge." That wasn't my request. He's the presiding judge, he had a duty, okay? The public defender in San Francisco is elected. Her website says she wouldn't allow this. I encourage this board to consider the opportunity to direct a formal review of the public defender and take action. A formal review, look how red his face is. Let him come up and deny. One word I spoken, let him come up and deny and there's a member of the jury.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams?
But he's still here.
Would you speak to the board, please?
Yes, thank you. You allowed Ms. Ariaga to turn her back. So, your public defender's office, he says, what did he say? Justice? Justice, rights, liberty? Do you know Ferretta Rights, Ferretta versus California? Is it automatic reversal when you deny self-representation and that's what I applied for here? I've never been convicted, it's automatic reversal. Come on, public defender and Mr. Schwartz, come up to this board and say, Mr. Williams is wrong, say he said one word wrong. I've got certified witnesses, certified. This is an opportunity and you have information here, not my testimony. This is an opportunity, and you have information here, not my testimony. You've got, other than my testimony, for this board to take action. If you're serious, you've redone the treasurer, you can redo all. I support you on that. But to now.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Time is up.
You going to answer any of my questions, ask for any answers to my questions?
Not this time, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So recommended.
I told you it was a good idea to do this.
To consider the opportunity to direct a formal review. So the board has had some discussion. I'd like to just comment that I appreciate the public defender's comments, Mr. Denemyer's comments, and the annual reports that we get, and always the communications. I think it's a lean department, does mighty work with very professional and few employees. And we always, during our budget deliberations, I believe we certainly look to respect that efficiency and operation in the public defender's office. So.
Madam Chair, just want to think, I remember when Mr. Denemyer came into the position, he told us pretty clearly what his timeframe was, how long he's going to do it, and what he was going to focus on. And I appreciate the fact that he did that, and I think we've had, I think we've had great confidence in what's going on in the public defender's office. So number one, I appreciate that. And the other is, in spite of the completely inappropriate five minutes that we have to listen to with Carol Dean Williams from time to time, I still think it's a good idea for one reason. It's a little bit, I mean, it gives us an opportunity to, you know, just to hear from you about, you know, what are the things that are focused on and to hear you say. I don't have any, you know, any major suggestions or anything. It's sort of like, you know, there's an exit interview that you do with, you know, in a department and maybe with the CEO. It's sort of like an exit interview for us a little bit. Anything you want to tell us on the way out? Because it's, I think that's valuable for us and keeps us involved. Thank you very much.
Okay. Receiving file.
In file, it's just, it's consider the opportunity. So considered, right.
And a second. Appreciate you being here and the board's discussion on that. We will now move forward to item 32. And this is an item that has been brought forward by Supervisor Bennett and myself for some amendments to our ordinance, 4395 Campaign Finance Reform Ordinance. There have been letters received by the board that have raised some questions regarding these proposed changes. And we have, well, actually, Rob Roy is not here, but we have one public speaker from the district attorney's office, which we also received that. Before we open this up for the public comment, which I think we should do, should we have any further discussion?
My interest would be to not take action today.
Right.
Happy to hear the public comment, but I'd like to kind of, you know, I think we have general idea, but it's how do we make the changes, I think, is the concern that I would have. It'd be good to have some time to work that out.
Okay, and I would agree with that, having just received these detailed letters of issues, raised concerns with this. But in the interest of your spending time sitting with us this morning, Mr. Schwartz, if you'd like to come down and speak to the board on this item and make it part of the public record and.
Thank you very much. Good morning. The district attorney's office agrees that it is prudent to eliminate the contribution limit for independent, or two independent expenditure committees in light of the Citizens United case. I think that's in keeping with the spirit of the Citizens United case. Our concern that we outlined in the memo was the imposition of filing requirements on independent expenditure committees. The Political Reform Act limits the type of committees that those sort of requirements can be imposed on specifically. They have to meet the definition of a general purpose committee, and they can only be committees that are operating exclusively in Ventura County. So I hope that the board and county council will take a look at our concerns on that. We support campaign finance reform. Since we have enforcement responsibilities, we want to make sure that the ordinance is in compliance with state law. And unless the board has any questions, thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Any questions?
I just want to say, I appreciate you willing to go through the work, and I know it's on a short timeframe, and make it happen, but I agree with you. We, if we're going to make these changes, make the right changes, the correct changes. We don't have things that have to change on a regular basis. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Okay, no further public comment before any other comments by the board?
Yeah, I feel uncomfortable voting to change the laws that's going to affect the campaign I'm presently running in, so my preference is just to recuse myself.
Well, at this point, we have a motion to continue this item for at least a week, if not two. We'll see how long it may take us to have the review, further review by county council's office and discussion. Is that the motion? Mr. Bennett? That's my second.
Right, and I appreciate both of you willing to, let's take a hard look at this and do the right thing. So thank you very much.
And while we're at it, I owe Supervisor Foy an apology. Last Wednesday, we had an anxious reporter out there who wanted to get his hands on this, and a week or two earlier, I said, "When it's ready, sure, I'll give it to you." The district attorney asked for it, and so we were extended to the district attorney, and then he called at the same time, and so staff sent it to him, and then they said, "Boy, last time, the elected department heads complained that they didn't get a copy," so we sent it to them and simply forgot to send it to the supervisors. And then you got a reporter calling you about something that you haven't seen. That's something we don't, it was not intentional.
Well, I appreciate that.
Completely overlooked that thought, so.
Okay, the continuance request is going to be one or two weeks?
Yeah, I think it's going to be a hustle for us to get this done by tomorrow. And we could try to do it for, you know, and just file it late, but I think, just to make it safe, let's just say one or two weeks.
Okay. All right, so that's the motion and the second. And let's vote.
I guess, yeah. I'll have trouble with it next week if I don't get it done this week.
All right, then. And thank you, and appreciate you staying to have this item heard. Okay, next up is my item, and it's item 33, and it's to make appointments to the various committees identified, and that's my motion.
Second.
Why don't we just say we'll bring it back as soon as possible?
Soon as we can.
All right. Do we need to reconsider, or do we need to reconsider and all that kind of stuff?
We're vague enough.
We would need a date specific because we published the summary, a publication.
Yeah.
And without a date, I'd have to republish, which would take almost about 10 days.
Uh-huh. So will we, what's that?
March 16th. Those will be brought back March 16th.
Nobody's going to be spending too much money on TAC ads before then, I hope.
We will bring back to the board for consideration item 32, which we need to amend to put the specific date, which is now proposed to be March 19?
16.
16, March 16th. And that's.
So moved.
Motion and the second.
Moved to receiving file.
Well, that completes our agenda. We're going to a closed session. An announcement, closed session.
There is an announcement possible.
Possible announcement. We'll let you know, Roberta.